You are live.
Okay.
I like that, that's good.
Yeah, of course, we have four.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the municipal council for the year 2025, which is published as a legal advertisement in the Herald News on January 5th, 2025. Further notice of this meeting was given on Friday prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton website, which notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken on the matters to come before the municipal council. Have a roll call, please.
Councilman Demata, absent. Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Colloge.
Present.
Councilman Latona.
Here.
Councilwoman Pino, absent. Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Here.
Mayor Gervais.
Here.
We have a quorum.
So, Mayor, before we get started, last night we had a meeting with the disabilities committee, and according to city manager, the closed caption is up and running.
Yes.
So for the public at home, you can now click on the box underneath the city webpage where you've watched the meeting, and it'll ask you yes or no, do you want closed caption? So, thank you to...
Is it only on, is it on the TV as well?
Well, you have to put, you have to program it on your TV. So you have to go into your Comcast or whatever you have up here, and then turn Settings, correct.
So, thanks to the administration and everyone who made that happen.
John Rika.
Yes, John Rika.
Could we possibly put on our website the instructions, if you have Verizon or Cable Vision, that you have to do that, because I would never have known you would have had to do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's on there or not, but that's, that's a good suggestion for...
And lastly, that we got step one in place, being a diverse community, I know it's come up before, can we see what it would take to do closed caption in multiple languages? I don't know what that process, but...
Yeah, we are still working, it's two or three different steps, and we're also working on the headsets as well.
Okay.
So that'll probably come later in the year when we do our transfers.
What's headset?
Headsets, that'll be able to, you'll, the audio will be pumped into your headset as you listen to the meeting.
People out there with hearing issues could hear it with the headset.
Yeah. It's like a three-part thing, but that's sort of the end of the...
We're making progress.
Very, I'm extremely, I'm extremely thankful about this, thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, roll set down.
Well, it was also, we're doing it earlier, it was required by law, right?
Yeah.
For next year, if we had a TV, we have to have it.
Oh.
Yeah.
As of next year.
As of next year, we're ahead of the game.
Holy smokes, all right.
Yeah.
That's good.
Good job.
Okay, act item one, chief financial officer recommends approval of chapter 159 budget amendment.
Move it.
Second. Objection, day two, authorization to closing and canceling balance of certain capital projects.
Move it.
Second.
This is, well, does everybody see what this is? We're canceling the fire station, which is 3.5 million, it's over $4 million worth of projects we're canceling. Ground, soil and groundwater at Athena Two, Athena Steel Projects, 104. Why couldn't we have used that money for the lighting?
I'm not, I'm not sure I know that these are areas of five-year projects that have not been acted upon.
And I don't expect you to have the answer now, but what is...
He's not here tonight.
What's the line item, administrative expenses, that we're closing out, $386,819? Thank you.
This is based on mostly the recommendation we got from the forensic auditors, said to review old grants and cancel them, correct? Correct. Thank you. Okay, objections, A3, chief financial officer recommends approval of resolutions to cancel grant account balances. Move it. Second, again, I understand we have to do this, but I did have some questions.
I do too, so you go first.
So, well, CFO isn't here, we just were told. So cancelling grant balances is different than cancelling bonding, because cancelling open bonding is money we didn't spend, correct? Canceling grants is losing money, because that's money that we had in grant money that we didn't spend. So for me, that's a whole different conversation of why are we canceling grant money?
Grant money.
Again, so these particular balances were lines of credit off, off the capital projects?
No, this is grant money. This is grant money.
The second one, right?
This is, we're on way three.
A3.
And it says grant balances. And, Tony, if you're done...
Can we, all right, then I'll let you talk, I was in a table.
But they're significant ones. First of all, New Jersey Health Department, local health capacity, we're giving, well, unspent is $13,121. MOU, PCHD, childhood lead poisoning, $49,227.63. And the last one is station house adjustment program, God only knows what that is, $45,000. So, Tony, I agree with you.
Right, before we cancel this one, can we look to table it and find out why we can't use this money for something similar?
I'll second your tabling.
Because again, this is a whole different from bonding.
I agree with you.
Okay, I'll support the tables, that's not an issue, but typically if you have cash that's available, that is actually our cash match that went into it, and so the project is now complete, there's no need for us to match the funds that are needed to be used from the grant, so it's going back into a pool, which can then be used, as you're saying, Councilman, for other projects.
Well, let's, let's make sure with that.
If we're not losing it, that's different, so...
No, because grant, let me tell you, you don't spend your grant, you don't spend it within the window, they call you up and say, send me your money back. So we're not losing any money by making these cancellations.
Let's hear from our CFO and see exactly what it was and when this was.
Okay, so no objections to tabling?
And this is being captured, so we can review the audio with Mr. Coens when he comes back.
Okay. A4 authorization.
So we're tabling three.
Yes.
But two is being moved, or no?
Yes, two is moved. A4, authorization to approve and extend grace period for the fourth quarter.
Move it, just so the public is, the public knows that the November 1st taxes are due, and you have a grace period now through November 17th, 2025. So you won't accrue interest or penalties with, if you don't pay before the 17th.
Okay.
And everybody should sit down when they get their bills.
I got some text messages, some people asking about that, so...
But as a, as a public service, if you don't pay by the 17th, if you pay by the 18th, your interest gets calculated all the way back to the first. So you may not want to cut it so tight.
But it's all, that's always the way it's been.
Okay. A5, authorization approved, the cancellation of 68% of the taxes and refund. Move it. Second.
And the reason why it's a 68% is because this is, even though it's 100% disabled veteran, it's a two-story ham, house, so he occupies 68% of the house, if anybody is wondering.
Okay, objections, A6, authorization to prove the cancellation of and refund of a portion of... Move it.
Second.
Objections, A7, 10 Metro Boulevard Starbucks on 3.
Move it. Move it.
Second. Release them on, okay. Objections, A8, authorization to solicit request for proposals.
Move it.
Second. Question, Mayor? Sorry?
I have a question?
Yes.
So this is for, we're going out for accounting services for Section 8 housing program. Back in August, we rejected the sole proposal for handling Section 8, am I correct?
This is a different, these are the accounting firms, so there's two different firms that, that do these services for me. This is not MLA, this is not...
So this has nothing to do, because back in August, we relied on the information coming from administration.
Correct.
We are now going to do this in-house, and now we're going out for proposals that are outsourcing it.
Now, this is, this is a different entity, this is a different discipline, and I can get you the, the documents or the supporting documents on the two prior firms that we use for this particular action.
Thanks, sir. Okay, A9, authorization to amend the resolution, 33625.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, because a while ago I asked for full cost accounting of the Styrofoam. Are we making money, are we losing money? I understand, I know we got the machine for the, from the county for a dollar, and we had to provide the services from the county, but this is the second purchase of equipment that we're needing for this, besides retrofitting and adding electricity to one of the barns to, for the machine. So I've asked for it months ago, so I hope...
I'll second your table.
Discussion, yeah. Can we not shut down discussion?
I'm fine with a discussion, yeah.
Thank you, you're first, Councilman.
Me too.
I, I thought this was because the bid went over, it's not two more, it's the same two, if I read it correctly, and also we didn't do the electricity at the barn, they moved it instead, not to cover that cost, if I'm not mistaken, to the DPW yard on that, with that machine. Initially, we were going to put it at the barn, and that changed.
I don't recall that, but...
But it's at, and looking at the bid, it just went over the 17,000 threshold from the time we approved it, I'm just saying.
My motion is still pending, because I want a cost accounting of this.
Table?
We, yeah, we don't, we're, if we're, if we're losing money on this, like, come on, we face, Gary, what do you say we face next, next year, starting so far, a 17 tax point increase?
17 million.
Million, 17 million tax...
33 tax points.
33 tax points, so we've got to watch our, our money here. We, and if we're losing money, we can't afford to have losing projects.
Yeah.
That's right, that's fair. Yeah.
Councilman Tony is correct, we've already approved the purchase of these.
The whole of the payment, if you don't...
So the, the only thing that's really going to happen is we're not going to approve an additional $1,430, and we're going to have two roll-off trucks that we can't move, because we're not getting $1,400 worth of accessory to it. So because it's already been approved, it seems to me to be foolish to sit here and table it. This goes back to, was it the dump truck, what did we wind up table, on the garbage truck? And then we wound up approving it two weeks later anyway. It's just $1,400, it has already been approved purchase. I don't agree with the idea that we're now going to table this, and in theory, get delivery of two pieces of equipment that we're now going to have to pay someone to come and move for us. So you can have a vote on the table, but I'm against tabling, I'm ready to move forward today.
Second, so...
It was already second, is your tabling still stamped?
No, I'm, you know, I have a courtesy, and I also like to see just a cost accounting in general.
Any objections?
Any other objections besides Councilman Colloge? Okay, table. A9, authorization to amend the resolution.
Yeah, we did that.
That's, that was nine, right?
Yeah.
We were on 10, sorry. Authorization to approve the purchase of handheld chemical detection meter.
Move it. Move it.
Second, just for discussion on that, for the public to know, in the meeting last week, actually, I'm glad Councilman Colleger was clicked in onto it with the administration. This is a, unfortunately, it's a $100,000 piece of equipment, it's being paid for by a grant, but it is going to be on first-line equipment, and not on the hazmat vehicle that basically stays in the firehouse. So this will be used for detection of chemicals and drugs and thing for emergency services, police, fire, on-call, on-scene, immediately, that'll save lives. So I will recall for a fire committee meeting, because there are areas, as we talk about 2026, that there's services we do in the fire department that aren't part of our daily operations, that cost a lot of money, that I don't know if we need to be spending money on, that we can look to consolidate, so that's something after a committee meeting. I'll be looking to bring back to my council colleagues for a full discussion. So that's it on that, but I just wanted to say it's going to be on the first-line equipment.
That, that's good, because as you can see, it detects nanogram level traces of fentanyl, and we all know what fentanyl, and that, disgusting, it's killed more people than anything.
So no objections on that. A11, authorization to repurchase of all blocks.
Move it.
Move it.
Second, I just got a question, in the meeting the other day, it said we were, our bins were all full, so I'm okay with purchasing it, I just, it's under the assumption our bins were full, so if we're purchasing it, where is it going? I'm not going to hold it up.
But, Councilman, if I can, it's just to replace, if we go through what we have on storage right now, it's just to replace it at that rate.
Thank you for that answer.
As the memo for the public certification, as the memo points out, we have 3,500 tons available to us, and on average, we use about 4,000 tons a cycle, a winter. I think it's typically about 1,000 tons to handle one storm. So at $70 a ton, you're looking at, you know, $70,000 every time we have a storm to go out and salt. So this is in the event that, you know, we actually get storms, and the 3,500 tons goes down to 2,500, we have the ability to replenish it. But I will also point out that we will be funding this fully out of the Storm Recovery Trust Fund, because we cut from the budget the ability to buy salt from the operating budget.
Okay, no objections. A12, next page, authorization to approve from...
Move it.
Second.
Councilman Colleger, this is identical in scope to A8, so these are, these are accounting services outside of M&amp;L or Triad.
Thank you. Okay, A13, authorization to approve contract Triad associates.
Move it.
Second. I just, I just wanted to thank the administration and Triad, they came in the other day, they met with all the department heads first before a meeting, and all the department heads in the administration, myself, I know Councilman Colleger was able to log on, sat in this room around a table, put everyone together, went over grants, went over expectations, went over some of the issues we had in the past, I was very impressed with it.
When was, when was this meeting?
Monday.
Monday?
At what time?
Yes.
What time was the meeting?
1:00.
1:00?
One in the afternoon, yes. So it was a great meeting, a lot of good information came out of it, I was very clear with them for me, expectations are high. For the public to know, we used to rubber stamp a lot of things around here, and now, if you want to come back as a professional service contractor, for my support, at the very least, you need to produce. So I have great expectations for them, and hopefully, we get some grants out of them moving forward.
Good.
So Mayor, just to add to that, because I did, I did have the meeting on the background, and I think that the two important things that we need to take away from the meeting that we have was, one, yes, these guys are more expensive than the ones we're replacing, but they, they stressed the fact that there is a lot of prep work that typically needs to be done in order to have a successful grant award, that you actually have to spend money on planners, and you have to spend money on engineers, and put all of that information into the grant application. So I'm just going to remind my colleagues that we also cut that out of this year's budget.
A14, authorization approved, acceptance of 219.
Move it.
Second. Move it.
One sec. Oh, just a couple of questions, Mayor, you through to Legal. So this is a donation being made by Liberty Mutual on a vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. So even though it's a donation, the governing body still needs to approve this vehicle to add it to our...
Fleet.
Fleet.
Mm-hmm.
And moving forward, the insurance, the fuel, the maintenance is on the city, correct?
Correct, but they are retaking one of the far data fleets, so we, you know...
I just wanted to clarify, to bring this fleet, this vehicle to the fleet, it needs the governing body approval, correct? Thank you.
Every vehicle does.
Well, that's not what happened in the past.
I'm going to love your 20 vehicle threshold.
Those days are gone, Tony.
I wanted to clear that up.
Tony, those days are gone.
All right, A15, authorization approved, rewarding extraordinary, second.
So Mayor, I had asked at the last meeting, when this was put before us, that we can get a explanation as to what the stop-loss services are provided.
Yes.
Do we have an answer to that?
Yes, I do. Want to move on, and I'll get, if you want to hold that to the end, I'll...
Counsel, counsel, if you have a question?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
Well, I wanted to just, well, I'm interested to hear when you come back with Joe, so...
Yes.
We'll table it and come back to it.
Yeah, I have a question, too. We can table and come back to it. A16, authorization to approve police department management information specialist. Move it. Second. Objections, A17, authorization approved, deputy city clerk salary ordinance.
Move it.
Second. So just for clarifications on this, this is just a housekeeping type thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Because the salary is more than the, what is stated in the top level, in the salary file.
Raising salary, got to...
Right, I got you, okay, that's, that's just... A15, authorization to approve an application.
Second.
Do you want to bring them in for an interview? Or are we going back to, who? Hold on.
I thought we were doing that when there was more people than positions?
Yeah.
Isn't that how it was?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding, too.
When there were few for the same... Right, right.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be a no vote on this, Mayor?
Okay.
Which one, I missed it.
A18, authorization...
This is appointing John Maxwell to the historic commission.
All right, so can I go back to the Councilman Colleger?
What are you going back to? A15.
Wanted the, so when servicing...
Okay, A15, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
When surfacing a self-funded account, which is what we have, the stop-loss is the largest component of the program, included in that is the following, monthly reporting, reconciliation, stop-loss reimbursement due back to the state, getting stop-loss advances when large claims hit, so the city doesn't have to front unusually large claims, marketing the stop-loss programs annually, and negotiating the renewals, analyzing and determining the correct ISL levels for the city based on the large claimant data. That is your stop-loss component.
I'm sorry, so real quick, Joe, what was your question?
Who did that explanation come from?
That was from Marsh and McLennan.
Okay. Because my, my concern with Marsh McLennan was that, and it's not attached here, it would have been a little more helpful, from the grid that we did on an RFP, that they weren't going to charge anything for that. And my concern is, is that we're going to wind up getting what we pay for, and, and given that this year, we performed very well in our stop-loss program, which offset our self-insurance cost, which wound up saving us money, and my concern is, is that, you know, we went out RFP, and then we didn't follow the rules of public purchasing in RFPs, because then we got into a competition, and I believe that these guys lowered their per-person cost down to $16, a dollar less than what was originally proposed in...
Not originally.
And so my concern is, is if we're going to go back and forth with people, we should go back and forth. But here is my real concern, it's, it's a dollar difference per employee. We have how many employees?
About 700.
700 employees, so it's $700 a month difference, and I've got a proven track record with someone who is bringing us in more stop-loss money than, than we're accustomed to seeing, and I'm concerned that changing forces is going to ultimately backfire on us for a savings of $700 a month. So if it's going to remain as Marsh McLennan instead of IMAC, I will be voting no on this, Mayor.
Roll call. I'm here.
I have a...
So, I want to echo my colleague's sentiments in the sense that I also agree with that, given the state of this council, and the state of the nation in general, where health benefits is a very much a hot topic, we don't know where that's going, to change to a new broker at this time who doesn't know Clifton, who by default will have a learning curve, and obviously, not only doesn't know Clifton, but doesn't have programs that this broker that we currently have does have in place, I just want to bring to the attention of my colleagues, if you guys don't know, IMAC does offer a, a program called 360, which is benefits to our city employees, which also helps save us some money here on the tax side. So these are things that we would also be losing if going with this other broker. And to, also, just for clarification to what Councilman Colleger said, they are saying here $16, but that includes commission, where, Mayor threw you to the city manager, where the other broker was a little higher, but that included, that was inclusive of commissions, right?
Now, what we did is, we took it to a PE PM program, so the comparison, instead of doing a larger, a larger calculation, we boiled it down to a P, PE PM, price per employee, and that's the comparison we did. They came in at 27 on the original.
Okay.
They were always at 17.
Marsh, we said 17.
Marsh was always at 17, when we do those two comparisons. They got wind, or they were, had the conversation, we didn't reveal the two PEP numbers. IMAC then came in at $17, which is $1 below, but Marsh was.
Marsh was 17.
I'm, 17, right, so 17, so they, 18, so I'm sorry, Marsh was 18, IMAC came in at 17.
Right.
We went back to IMAC, I mean, went back to Marsh, and Marsh said, now we're 16. So whatever the number is for IMAC, we will always be $1 less.
Well, why did we call IMAC?
IMAC was known, we told IMAC that they are $1 cheaper.
Union Marsh.
IMAC.
Marsh is a dollar cheaper, you're saying?
Yes.
And you told, you told IMAC that Marsh was a dollar?
Correct. All right, and so that was the game at this point. Now, whether the union has sent a letter to me, I forwarded to Marsh, they had responded that there are identical programs across the board, all union contracts are equal to or better than, and that's the premise that they, that they provide insurance. Again, IMAC is a tried and true company.
So is, so is Marsh McLennan.
Marsh is also a tried and true company, but you have history, and you all make good points, and at the end of the day, you, you can have buyer's remorse, you can go with Marsh and not like Marsh, and go back to IMAC. This is not, you're not joining the Navy where if you go, you know, you leave, you go to Leavenworth. So you, you can, you have that, you have that ability. So if having somebody come in and having somebody, new eyes for the year, you know, will give you an opportunity, but...
I would point out, last year, Marsh McLennan was even, was cheaper than IMAC, and this council, I believe Chris and I voted no, or Tony and I voted no for it, we didn't, it was more expensive then, and I don't know what the problem was.
It was a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, how much, 100, yeah, exactly. Well, so does Marsh McLennan have experience.
They do not have experience with large groups.
Oh, sure, sure.
I, I don't know that.
The different class year was what, you said?
Hundred, 100,000, about 100, wasn't it? Hundred. Yeah, about 100.
But again, I mean, this is a good conversation, this is...
You said...
I said Chris, I think it was Tony.
So, we're here where we are now. That 360 program, are you saying, does the other company have a program like that?
The other program, they responded to the unions, they responded to the union's explanation regarding the 360 program, if the surfacing of that program is not able to be transferred, which they are under the impression that it's just a purchase program, according to IMAC, we will be able to replace it with a better or matching program as per the, as per the union contracts, so to avoid any disruption in membership. I mean, this is not Jed Shetts, I mean, these, IMAC is a $25 billion, I mean, Marsh McLennan is a $25 billion worldwide company, so, again, if, if you're looking for insight, and you're looking to kind of have other companies check other companies, you know, this is one of the opportunities to bring somebody in for a year and see, and see if it works.
What number was this, I'm sorry?
A15.
Sorry, I'm just trying to go back to my notes.
I'd just like to say, we've had IMAC for so long, and they've done, they've done right by us all the time.
I know.
They have very intelligent people working for them, and they've always looked out for the best interest of Clifton. They have very intelligent people working for them, and they've always looked out for the best interest of Clifton.
Charging us more last year was looking out for Clifton.
Well, we don't know that.
Oh, I know it. I know it was, because I looked at the numbers.
I'm, I'm.
Can we call the vote, please?
So I just, I just have a couple of questions. So I had my original notes, I Mac initial number was thirty-four dollars, you said twenty-seven.
Whatever the email was, I sent the email.
For some reason I had thirty-four, I'm just trying to compare. So that was the original, then you're saying this McLennan kind of came in at eighteen?
Well, mine had been, and then I think it went, then I think it went down to twenty-seven or so, and then it went down to seventeen. I mean, they, they were, they were shrinking it down each time, um, they called in.
So I think part of the problem, Councilman, is that when we went out for R F Ps, we did not ask for the proposal to come in as a, a P.
P E P M.
Right? And, and so when, we didn't ask for that, and then we decided that we were going to use a matrix to judge it based on P E P M, we then had to give people an opportunity to actually give us a P E P M number, so.
That number's just based upon the four numbers that are presented.
Right, I was going to say.
The matrix is based upon.
And so here's my issue now with the matrix, is a new council came in, this is my dilemma, is a long history with one company, and a new council came in, and my issue is, the former administration should have, because we had a meeting with them and about the JIF with another company last month, where, and I think the administration brought everyone in a few months ago, and had conversations about everything, and those conversations with this new council should have come three years ago.
Well, we did.
And instead of having those conversations three years ago, let me finish, everything was, I don't even want to use the adjectives I want to use. We were attacked, spun in circles, we went out to some bids, uh, these matrix, you just used the word matrix, the former administration came up with a matrix and said this divided by that came here, but now you're saying a bid last year, when I hear the number a hundred thousand, that concerns me. So it's just a dilemma for me of.
The way I feel, let's give the new company, we're saving money, we spend thirty-three, we're thirty-three million dollars in the hole, and because I Mac did it, and you know what, I didn't accept any money from I Mac, but there are people around this table that accepted money from the owners of I Mac for their campaign contributions.
So Mayor, Mayor threw that to the council movement, would you be kind enough to name those?
No, please, can we just stick to?
No, that's part of the.
It is an accusation. Uh, Councilwoman Pino got a five hundred, I believe, donation for In at the Park, from In at the Park, which is owned by I Mac, yes. In at the Park, it's on your, it's on your.
Everyone, please, please, can we just?
We'll stick to.
It's on your, your.
Is that something illegal? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Well, you got a donation, five hundred dollars, maybe more.
I don't.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Can we just, can we just stick with?
We have a motion on the floor in a second.
I have a question, right?
Yes, Bill.
Um, Mr. De Marzo, what are you, what are you recommending?
I recommend that the, the council's looking for to have other companies cross-check the existing companies, and this is an opportunity to have a larger organization come in and cross-check what I Mac has been doing. Again, it's not a long-term contract, it's a professional service contract. They'll have a year to, uh, prove themselves. If it's not working, there's always outco, there's always out clauses. Uh, so I'm recommending that we go with, uh, Marsh for this term.
One minute, second call to vote.
One minute, second call to vote.
Councilman Damato.
I'm going to follow administration's recommendation, yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Colloge?
No.
Councilman Latona?
I, I wish we could have had these conversations three years earlier with, with what we had, um. Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Given the unstable state of this council and the country in general when it does deals with health benefits, I don't think it's prudent for the council right now to try something new, so my vote is no.
Councilwoman Sandra Kula?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Um, no.
Four yes, three no. Motion passed.
Okay, A nineteen, authorization to prove memorandum of understanding.
A sixteen.
Move it.
Oh, no, we did all of it.
Oh, okay, we won.
A, hold on, hold A nineteen. Hold on.
We're on A nineteen, this is.
Motion from Bill.
Second.
So, this is for?
Lit. Childhood led exposure prevention, so awarded grant, an amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. And objections then? Okay, A twenty, authorization to prove tax collector of new properties and bill property owners.
Move it.
Second. And objections, A twenty-one, authorization to award.
I, I do have a, just a note. Doesn't look like we're saving any money, because it's about the same what bills were before.
Talking about what number, I'm sorry. A what?
Twenty, twenty. And I wonder how many other things our D P W could be doing.
Well, that honestly, that is a concern I have with going this route. Um, I was going to let it go, but since you brought it to my, my colleague brought it up, is I know we're getting paid now, but my concern is with all the things we want D P W doing, um, I'm not in, I don't want to get into, well, I'm not going to bring it up. So my, my concern is by, yes, D P W doing this, I don't want it to affect other services of our parks and, you know, tree stumps and all these other things that need to be doing. So we're doing it now, but we need to really look into, uh, what's the best way to go with this in the future.
Okay, so we're good with this then? Okay. A twenty-one, authorization to award contract for wine community development?
Move it.
Second.
Objection, this one, uh, through you, Mayor, this is, this one is not related to the, uh.
This is the C B D, um, administrative services. This is the home, chip, uh, community development, block grants, that's what this particular organization will be doing.
So then to ask the question again, I thought we were doing this in-house.
Through what in-house?
I thought the reason, the, the information provided to us in, in August was that we were going to be able to do this program in-house.
Not, not, this is a large state federal program, not this particular.
I am aware of that, but I'm also aware that administration presented to us that we have the ability to handle this in-house.
I know this administration didn't present it that way.
I will show you the tape.
Show me the tape, but no, this is not.
And this is for the grand writer?
This is beyond my, uh, no, this is C B.
C B.
Oh, the C B.
Yes, this is, uh.
That we have to have.
Right.
This is Jill Hartman, this is M and L, these were those two things, this was an eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So back in order, my recommendation was to be able to continue the contract through the end of this year with, so that we would have the ability to then go out for an R F P for these services, and now you're telling me that.
The contract with who? I'm sorry.
Right, so we kept, this is, we kept Mrs. Sidoti as a contractor, who was a subcontractor of Jill Hartman.
Jill.
And now I'm paying her through the same funds that was being paid by Jill Hart. So Miss, so Donna had stayed on to continue the program, but the larger aspects of that particular program have to be handled by a larger company.
And this was the one that.
No, I think it's by a licensed company.
Uh, semantically, yes, so, yes.
This was part of what, we lost that one grant that?
This was the three hundred thousand dollars that the mayor had signed, that we tried to recapture, correct?
Right, that we lost.
Well, actually, this was, that was a three-year grant, so wasn't it more like one point five million over to three years?
Yeah, it was about three hundred thousand each year.
I think we lost three, yes, good point, Tony, we lost it over three years.
We didn't lose it, we know exactly where it's at. The Fed's having some.
It's a grant system that goes for three years, so we have the ability to apply for it, uh, this coming year.
The home, yes, we do, so we will, we will apply for the three hundred thousand.
It's, it's whatever the number is times three.
Well, we gave it up the last three years.
We gave it up the last three years. We're going forward, but the last three years, we lost it.
But to go back to, uh, the councilman's, um, question, this is a standalone company that does this, that is taking place of the Hartman Group and of M and L, that's what this company is doing. And keeping the in-house component controlled by the township, not by the municipality.
Okay. Which Donna Sidoti's.
Correct, Donna is, Donna has been doing this for me, yes.
So you can just note my objection, Mayor.
Okay, one objection. Uh, A twenty-two, authorization to approve request by Art of Atlanta. Move it.
Second, here last year, it's a great little, how they party they do.
Twenty-three, authorization to approve a procession.
Move it.
Second.
Uh, before, hold on. This A twenty-two, okay, mine's A twenty-three.
A twenty-three.
Oh, this is.
Your A twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Oh, so before we go to move this, uh, for approval, this one just happens to be the one that come up. I'm asking my colleagues, as one of our twenty twenty-six fixes, we need to make parking, uh, part of any approvals for events, street fairs, um, all of these events that we do, because I've seen it all over town, I don't want to start naming them, because the hate mail will come. But we do these approvals, and then all the parking goes into the residential towns, blocking streets, this and that. So for my colleagues, we need to add to that list, they need to do a shuttle service, they need, I know the V F W does, I always say the V F W, because when they have their picnic, they're, they're the ones that, they will run a shuttle service, they have an agreement with the Masonic Temple, they park there, they run a shuttle service. So, um, I'm not picking on this event, I'm just saying as we talk about twenty twenty-six, that that needs to be on the table before we do these approvals, that all of these groups have some type of plan for parking or, or something.
Alright, good. Uh, A twenty-four, I'm gonna accuse myself, because I'm friends with the people.
Well, is it your band going to perform at the?
I don't know, they, I wasn't.
Come on there, come on.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Gibson as acting mayor.
Second that. Go ahead, Bill, you're up.
Oh, thank you. Um, so we need a, a motion on this.
Uh, move it.
Second.
Okay, do we need, uh?
Roll call.
Do we, we need roll call?
No, I don't think there's any objection.
Oh, any objection?
Okay.
You're back to being back.
A twenty-five, authorization to approve request from St. Peters Haven for the five K run. Move it.
Uh, so before we go on this one, it's another twenty twenty-six one, and the administration put it under as a discussion item. I'm gonna ask my colleagues to table this, that until we resolve the issue, that we keep kicking down the road to cover the services of when we have these events, that we don't approve anything yet for twenty twenty-six. And again, I'm asking the administration why it wasn't on again for first ordinance, that it's on a discussion item instead, to come up with a plan for, to recover the costs for emergency services, D P W for these parades, carnivals, street fairs and events, um, as we talk about, you know, how much debt we're in, other towns are doing it, the ordinance is already there, we don't need to recreate the wheel, so I'm gonna be making a motion to table.
I'll second that, that was, that was going to be mine. If we approve this and later on we discuss it, we can't, we shouldn't approve anything, that's a big portion.
So, can we, do I have to make a motion to order the administration for next?
Would we short next year?
Between ten and seventeen.
Council meeting to have a first ordinance reading on resolving the issue.
Well, let me just, we are working on this issue, and Patterson and some of the other towns that we're looking at have legal complications with some of their ordinances.
Got it.
So if we adopt the same problematic ordinances that the other towns, uh, then we'll be in the same boat until they work at their legal issues. So we're actually lit, we're actually waiting for some of the other municipalities to spend their money on the litigation.
So we can't put something in place that doesn't include anything that may be controversial in the meantime?
Doesn't it say in, but we're, I guess we should wait, because that is later on. If you read that, I thought some of the suggestions you made were great. It was based on the number of street closures that in the, and that the fees, to me, that sounds like the way to go.
Yeah, that's, that's what we.
Because we assign police based on the street closures, right?
Yeah, we do, yeah, exactly.
Exactly, the, the number of intersections and the amount of time that they are, you know, that they're closed down.
That's it, the number of intersections, right.
So then, can we table this, have that on for first reading next meeting?
Well, we're going to talk about that, and so let's, you know, talk about it. So tabling this, I may second your motion to table this, because we would be very foolish to pass this now when we're looking to change it, especially hearing from our city manager how much we're in the hole next year. We've got to bring in revenue, and this is way.
Objections to?
Yes, Mayor, I mean, this is, this is our largest food bank in the city, and we're going to shut down their, they're one of their bigger fundraisers. I don't think anyone here plans on shutting it down, my colleague. When you wind up turning around and tell them they got to pay ten thousand dollars in order to hold it, you may very well shut it down, sir.
Okay, so that's two objections, so, myself. Okay, so we're going to go to discussion items. Uh, first discussion item would be twenty twenty-five municipal best practices inventory questionnaire. I don't know who asked for this.
Not sure either, Mayor.
Anyone want to, you want to fess up?
No, I, I had questions on it, this wasn't, this wasn't what I, what I asked for, but whatever.
So.
Oh, this is the annual audit statements, they're, they're saying, so that's what it is.
The pilots?
Yeah.
Right, I think at the last meeting, there was a question of how could we possibly answer this yes if we didn't get them? And this, uh, data that you provided for us says that we do get them, the audits.
The four hundred pages, is that what it was? So this, so this is, does the, so nobody specifically asked for the four hundred pages, but would anybody want a four hundred page, um, printing of the audits? Or do you want to come into the office, do you want me to, how do I, how do I disseminate four hundred pages to each?
Can you do that digitally?
We can, uh, but I don't know if the file is.
There's got to be a, all these reports got to have, when you go get a mortgage and there's ten thousand pages, they have a three or five-page summary, that it's not, you don't read five thousand pages, I forget what it's called, but it's a couple pages of, of what it is. So I, I understand every time we ask for report, we get all these crazy, oh, let's dump five hundred pages on it because they asked for a report. There's got to be a summary report on something like this and not four hundred pages, is my guess. So I am sure my colleagues, that's all they're, or we're looking for, and not every legal document that goes into it.
So I think that the clerk did try to send it.
So I'm, I'm looking at what we, what we, what was sent, right, and it was basically, it's four hundred pages, because it's four years worth of audits, and I'm not interested in four years worth of audits, to be honest with you, based on this pilot agreement, which is, uh, based on gross revenue. The only thing I'd really be interested in is the page that shows my gross revenue. So if it's easy enough to extract, extract out that page, because there are, uh, people around this table who are claiming that, you know, the big developers are getting cut breaks, and, and that, you know, they pay the same amount of money every year, and taxes go up, and, and now they're skating, and, and the truth is, is that this particular pilot is based on gross revenue. And so looking at the gross revenue from twenty twenty-one through twenty-four, we're going to be able to see that their pilot payments increased as their revenue increased, because that's the pilot agreement that we have. So I'm really only interested in seeing the page that has the gross revenue on it.
And this one's only for Bloomfield Ave or for all the pilots?
I think the question is all pilots.
Alright, because I only see one for Bloomfield Ave. I didn't see.
If we could get that one sheet for each of them, that would make it easier for us.
And which one, Joe, you're saying is based on share revenue? They all are?
They, all of our pilots are based on gross revenue, not shared revenue, gross, gross revenue.
If you'll get, you want a sheet on each one?
With the exception of the one pilot, uh, that is the daycare, and they're on the standard five-year pilot, so they're eventually going to come off their pilot and pay full amount of taxes, and that is a religious-run institution, so whoever negotiated out, getting them to agree that this is actually a, a money-generating entity and that it should, uh, pay, uh, they saved us a lot of trouble in, in terms of a, a state tax appeal down the road by, uh, setting them up with this, uh, five-year pilot, so, uh, but they are based on.
I think they've been in the business for longer than five years.
I thought that was from the nineteen nineties, that one.
Yeah, it's been in business.
Now we rode up the Valley Road?
Yeah, so, so their pilot is on the new building that they built, not on how long they've been in business, right? So it's, it's based on, we're expanding our, our footprint, we're expanding our capacity, and certainly I would assume our tax assessor was making the argument of that this is not an exempted, uh, use, as opposed to the rest of your religious use, which is exempted, and that probably became a little bit of an argument, and how we wound up with a pilot agreement that said in the first year, you're going to pay twenty percent of what you're supposed to pay in taxes, and in the second year forty percent, and it'll continue to go up by twenty percent, and then once they reach one hundred percent, they're no longer a pilot. They're now paying taxes like everybody else on that property, and the fact that they conceded that they're doing this through a pilot agreement means they can't go and try and appeal their assessed value and say that we're exempt, so we basically, I'm sorry. So we basically locked them in to making sure they pay their taxes.
Is that the property that's been paying four thousand? Is that the property that's been paying 4,000 a year since nineteen ninety-five or something? Is that that one?
Uh huh. Up on, off of Valley Road. It's up on.
Yeah. I think it's been 4,000 a year set.
It used to be a private residence.
Since nineteen ninety-five.
It used to be a private residence.
Anyway, let's not.
No, because I'm curious about this. If we can, through you, Mayor, to the city manager.
Does anybody have the forensic report?
If you can produce that, I will. That makes it simple.
If you can get that for us, I think that would.
Stand by, I have it right here.
Took it out. Took it out of my book today.
Four thousand a year since, wow, nineteen ninety-four.
Right, yeah. Right there. Yep.
Seventy-seven J Street, four thousand a year since nineteen ninety-four. Here it is.
And how much have they been paying since nineteen ninety-four?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, okay. Nineteen ninety-four, not five years ago.
So the garbage goes up, the emergency services go up. What was the cost of garbage in nineteen ninety-four compared to now?
A fraction.
All right, so we're gonna wait for.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the pilot.
All right. You two permit parking on residential street. Grade ordinance.
This is, Tony, I think he wanted this, right?
I, I asked for it to be on for first ordinance. I don't have anything else to add.
Pretty simple, right?
Other than the three changes the residents asked for the most that affected us. And I brought to my colleagues the last two months were to change it from one year to up to two years for the parking permit, to be able to submit your documents and pay online, which the police department worked on with some type of email address. And number three was to change your address to protect the residents to a code that would basically use the section of your town and your street in some type of code. So.
The addresses aren't hanging on the.
The addresses aren't hanging there. And, you know, a valet if you're out to eat or if you're, you know, a young female or something out and now some, everyone knows where you live. So those were the three changes. If my colleagues don't have no issues, if we can have it on for first reading next meeting, there.
Yes, go ahead. As for one piece of instruction with regard to that, as Lieutenant Brody points out in his memo, you know, currently we charge a fee each year. If we go to a two-year pass, are we keeping the fee at $10 or are we increasing the fee?
It's $10 per year.
It's $10 per year right now, so.
But the reason why it's $10 per year, because they gotta process it every year. If it's a two-year pass, we don't need to. The purpose of permit parking was to protect the residents from commuters, not to tax and attack the residents. So the, the $10 fee was the cost of the permit to pro, of our services to process it every year. If we go to a two-year permit, there's no reason to do this to our residents and charge them double because we're not doing double work as a city of Clifton employees.
Ma'am, three.
Counselor.
But I think in addition to it, it's just not to process the, the, the fee to process the permit. It's also a revenue generator, right? So if you go and say, okay, well, we're gonna do it for two years, but only charge the $10 and we're receiving revenue of those $10 every year, then you're gonna have a shortfall, right? So I think changing this, I agree, right? It makes it more convenient. But also, again, you have to think about the other side. This was a revenue generator. $10, $5, $1. It was still a yearly reven, uh, revenue gener, uh, revenue generator that now we're gonna miss out on if we do not adjust those fees. So what, what is your backup plan to make up that loss?
It, it wasn't developed to be a revenue generator. It was developed to protect the residents from commuters. That is the whole purpose of permit parking.
So we turned a fee.
We, we were told we needed to charge the fee because that was the cost for police and their time and the traffic division and, and the time to process for our city employees to process the paperwork for the permit. That was the purpose. I am not, not to, again, I don't want to repeat myself, but it wasn't developed for us to make a profit. It's developed to protect the residents from the commuters. That's it.
But to, to that point, it's not about making the profit, but we still need that money to continue to do that. So even though it's a two, for now it's for two years, you still, right? These, these individuals who are using permit parking still need those resources to go out. They still need police to reinforce. They still have to come to City Hall and City Hall still has to be attentive to provide them any other service. If they want an additional permit or they lost their permit or whatever the case is, right? So there's still a service that the city is gonna give. And although I can understand that it wasn't meant to profit, but this is the city. We're not doing profit. We're doing revenue generators that come from fees. So I guess my next question is to administration, when is the last time this fee was reviewed?
We just developed it last year.
So we, we, we went up from what? Can I, someone remind me?
We went from one dollar.
One dollar to $10. So even then, I think maybe then if we're gonna do that, we should look if that's actually the $10 is that cost, one time, $10, once a year, to cover the cost of what you just said, police, enforcement, all that fun stuff.
No, no, no. Enforcement gets paid by ticket. The cost of the $10 was the time. So if it now becomes a two-year permit, the, the city employees aren't gonna have to use all of that time. We cut it in half. So again, that was the purpose of the $10 fee. That's what traffic division said it would ca, it costs in the time for employees to process the paperwork. If it's gonna go to a two-year permit, that now is gonna get cut in half because half their time is gonna be used now. As for the revenue generator, the, the parking enforcers are still gonna create revenue by going out enforcing the permit parking and the illegal parking. That's, that revenue generator has not stopped. We're just simplifying the process for the residents by them being able to upload online, pay online and just pick up their pass. We're protecting the residents by not putting their address on it. And there was no reason for them, unless you move or get a new car, to come every year, clog up City Hall, stand in line and again, it was, and create for the, the permit parking residents, it became a nuisance for them. It's not supposed to be a nuisance for them.
But I don't disagree with any of this. I think this is all great. I think this is streamlining the process. I agree with all that. My only concern and comment is piggybacking off legal that says, well, what direction do we have, right? Because we were charging one price and now you wanna eliminate it, okay? You want to do to two years instead of a yearly thing, which means that we're not going to be getting that fee yearly, yearly, okay? And I don't know. Maybe I'm completely wrong on this, but again, part of that was also revenue that the city was counting on, regardless if you're saying, well, that's the cost of doing business and now we don't have, we don't have that cost, but it was still something. So anyway, that's just my take on it. I don't disagree with that.
Counselor Damato, did you want to weigh in?
I just had a question. If someone, does someone in this room have this number of how many permits we have issued in the city? Is that a number readily available? I, the figure I was given from the police department in terms of revenue was about $125,000 annually.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that figure?
Uh, the figure that I was given by the police department in terms of revenue that was generated was $125,000 annually.
So we're gonna cut that in half.
Well, we're also gonna cut in half the amount of time city employees are using to process these permit parking. So.
How do we measure how, how, how the time is being used? How do we, like?
It was, it was a suggestion from the previous administration to raise it to $10 because it took time-consuming to do it. And Tony, you're absolutely right. This was never made to be a revenue generator. It was supposed to be to cover the costs of what we were told it was. So.
Just like we were told with the issuing of handicap parking spaces. It used to be 25 bucks.
Right.
It came back from.
Personalized.
The traffic division that it cost $150 between the time it took them to go through all the steps, the cost for the sign, the cost of this, that's the number they came back with, that it cost them to do a handicap parking. To have PSCNG come out, they had to come put their lines in, make sure there wasn't a gas line for the line, the cost of the pole. It wasn't meant to be a revenue generator. It was brought to us by them as the cost to do it. And that's why we went with that number.
So your argument, so the argument is cut, cut the, cut the, the price in half from the 125, keep it or then, or add to it. So that's, that's something that the council will have to decide.
Well, I think.
Seventeen million? We're facing a seventeen million dollar deficit?
Between 10 and 17 million.
And we're gonna reduce the amount of revenue coming in. Got it.
So you got people on McCash Road where you live, to no fault of their own, have people park on Valley Road to take a bus to New York City. And because they have permit parking to protect them, you wanna use that as a revenue generator. That's protecting the little guy.
But the argument, like I said, if we can kinda move, so the, so the number's 125,000 for, for bringing in for a one year. It's gonna be 125,000 for a two-year or you're gonna add to it and, or, or double it. So that's your, that'll be a board decision.
Well, I'm not voting to increase it.
All right, well, that's.
For me, just letting my colleagues know we can.
That's what the argument.
Make a motion, do a roll call.
Yeah, I'm not voting to increase it too. It was never supposed to be a rent, revenue generator. Tony, again, I, we can talk till we're bruin the face. It was supposed to be to cover costs. You're absolutely right.
It's a discussion item and all your down to it. So we're kinda running into.
We have to stop right now.
Yep, you're kinda running.
So no, no, no more discussion. Everyone, this is going on the agenda for next meeting. As a thing. So if there's any roll call that needs to be taken because this.
I agree with you.
Well, I wanted to kinda add the revenue.
So then poll the council on who wants to raise the rate, keep it the same. My motion is to keep it the same.
For two year.
For up to two years, up to two years, because someone may get a permit.
No, we wanted to res, we wanted to change it. You just said.
I wanted to add, I wanted to add some more things about parking, but if you're gonna do it as standalone, resident, uh, ordinance change.
What did you want to add real quick?
I got, I got 1.9 million dollars in the parking meters conversation that we started having.
And that's something different. Okay.
Well, that's under the, that's under the parking ordinances. So if you're changing an ordinance, I like to change ordinance.
You have that discussion item, you have that discussion item.
Can you just table it till after the discussion item tonight?
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Hold on. No, I don't wanna table nothing. Discussion item six is revenue sources, city manager. So you can have that discussion before we start mixing everything up and nothing gets done. You can have that discussion item and bring that up. Discussion six, let's resolve permit parking.
I agree because this was just permit parking on residential streets. Yes, I agree with you, Tony.
Okay, so do you want it? You wanna vote on that now?
Well, no, it's going on, to put on the agenda and keep it as a $10 fee for a two-year period versus.
Up to two years.
Up to two years.
Up to two years.
Yeah, there's a reason for that. Because someone may get a permit halfway through the first year. It'll only be good for a year and a half because it's color-coded for that year.
Well, does anybody disagree with putting this on the agenda?
Well, it's gonna be for ordinance reading.
I don't disagree with putting it on the agenda. I just disagree with that point.
Okay, well, then you revote. No.
But we'll, we'll wait until we vote.
No, no, let's vote right now. Let's vote.
I'm sorry. I thought Chris said that he would like to table it. Can you give him the same respect he gives you?
I didn't hear him say he wanted to table.
Till after the discussion tonight because of what Gary said, but what you're saying makes sense. If we're gonna have the discussion tonight and they present the ordinance at the next meeting, it can, it can be inclusive, but I'm fine. I'm fine with putting this on the agenda, but I'll, I'll be honest, I'm on the fence with this one because of our financial situation.
So it'll be on for.
But it's on, I'm just saying D six is revenue sources. All I was saying was I didn't wanna mix everything. Parking meters is totally different.
I got you.
All right, so we have to go in for, we have to do a hard stop right now, so. That, if you could read the.
Yep, whereas like.
No, I thought, I'm sorry. There was a vote to put it on for first reading.
No, there were no objections.
Oh, okay. I just wanna make sure, I'm sorry.
Whereas the municipal council deems it essential in the furtherance of the public interest to discuss a closed session as expressly permitted by NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12. The following subjects to be discussed as per the agenda and the resolution. Con one, litigation, S Arnowitz et al. versus City of Clifton, et al. docket number as seen on the agenda, Joey's Place LLC et al. versus City of Clifton, docket number as seen on the agenda. Con two, contract negotiations, police chief. Con three, contract negotiations, development agreement with 1184 Main Avenue LLC. Con four, contract negotiations, FMBA, early retirement. Con five, contract negotiations, SOA. Con six, contract negotiations, Clifton School Traffic Guards. Con seven, personnel, employee health benefits. And con eight, personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that the public shall be excused and excluded from this portion of the council meeting to be held on October 21st, 2025, at which time the subject shall be discussed. Be it further resolved that the discussions held in such closed session can be disclosed to the public on or about the time the matter is concluded. Have a motion to go in then?
Motion second.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings municipal council for the year 2025, which was published as a legal advertisement in the Herald News and the record on January 5th, 2025. Further notice of this meeting was given on Friday prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton website, which notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken on the matters to come before the municipal council. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato.
Present.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Coloj.
Present.
Councilman Latona.
Here.
Councilwoman Pino.
Here.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Here.
Mayor Grabowski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, tonight's invocation will be given by Father Alexi. I don't know, do we see him here?
No, I don't see him.
So city clerk. And followed by the flag salute.
I will read one for you. Uh, we seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartially.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight we have a few presentations, so we'll start with that first. First, we have a proclamation recognizing public works professionals as first responders on October 28th, 2025. If Councilman Coloj would like to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to read this into the record. A proclamation recognizing public work professionals as first responders on October 28th, 2025. Whereas first responders, including public works officials, professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, paramedics and other emergency personnel stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of the City of Clifton in times of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the City of Clifton to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas, as of the 2019, the US Senate has included language recognizing public works along with fellow other first responders. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the City of Clifton do hereby designate October 28th, 2025 as National First Responders Day. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events and ceremonies, paying tribute to our public works first responders alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing the quality of life for all.
Mayor, ask Jason to come up.
DPW, you wanna come up and take a group photo? Come on. Come on. Bring them all up. Holy smokes. Night shift? It's a good time to have a storm.
What happened? They could get us in.
Okay, the next, next presentation, I'm going to let Councilman Latona take care of this one. Sir John Hughes and Ray Lil for the Tank Pull.
Good evening, everyone. So I've had the pleasure the last 15-plus years working with the founders of the Tank Pull, Tank Pull, John Hughes and Ray Lil. And I think to date in goods and services, we reached over $2 million this year. So with the support and help of the community, the City of Clifton, many, many sponsors, I remind everyone, all of the fundraising with the Tank Pull on behalf of these two gentlemen was either donated or at cost. I think we pay for like very, very, very little things. All right, he just said zero. So if anyone's ever had the opportunity to go out fundraising with these two gentlemen, I've actually had to walk out of the room because they will make sponsors feel so guilty if they try not to 100% support the veterans. And so these two gentlemen are, have done an amazing job. So on behalf, John Hughes, Ray Lil, if you want to come up and help do the check presentations. If, if we can start out with the Avenue of Flags, Marie, the keeper of the flags, if you want to come up, there's a $2,000 check that Ray and John will present to you all on behalf of the Tank Pull. I guess we're going to have to.
Wait. Come this way, Marie.
I always like to announce, how many flags are we up to now? Bill, Marie Summons, how many flags we up to now? Do you have any of your flags?
2,800.
2,800 flags, so, 2,300? So.
How many flags? They're too busy.
So 2,300 flags and counting, so as everyone knows, they go up seven times a year, I think. So we're always looking for volunteers, or they're always looking for volunteers in the morning and evening. Next, if we can bring up Susan, she's going to accept the check on behalf of Clifton Cares for $2,000. Susan, there you, okay, there she is. So as everyone knows, as everyone knows, Clifton Cares, oh, I see Liz Gagnon is here also. She was one of the founders with Donna and Chris. They found Clifton Cares, and it has sent thousands and thousands of care packages to deploy military troops around the world. And again, I had the opportunity to get some of those packages when I was deployed. So Clifton Cares does a lot of good, sending packages downrange. It brings a lot of love, support, and a little TLC to those stationed, especially around the next packing will be in November for Christmas, so.
Yeah, it's 16 and 19.
Okay, so it's coming in November, so someone going to take the picture? Clifton Cares, they took it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Chris, Joe Gashion, anyone else here from the Veterans Parade Committee, or just you two? Okay. So as everyone knows, Chrissy and Joe continued tradition, that was started by their dad. So we are one of the few towns, as everyone knows, left that does the Veterans Day Parade. So they put all the time and effort. We want to take the picture, hold on. Are you all getting in here? Sorry, I'm talking. And again, thank you, Ray and John, for starting this 15, 16 years ago.
And then next, we'd like to call up Mr. Whittles, Tom Whittles from CASA.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom Whittles, president of Clifton Against Substance Abuse. I want to first by, start by saying, great presentation to the first responders, Joe. We need to add the Health Department to that group. That's a group that responds when needed for many crises in the city. Tonight I'm here not only to speak about some of the programs the Health Department runs, but also to honor the person that helps lead these programs. They run a program called CTAS, Clifton Tobacco Age of Sale Enforcement. This program sends underage individuals into retail establishments to try to purchase tobacco and illegal flavored vape products, products that are a detriment to the health and well-being of our children. If successful, fines are issued along with mandatory court appearances. Those fines range from $250, second offense $500, third offense $1,000. In our opinion, way too low, way too low. Because the establishment's attitude is, it's just the cost of doing business. They come in, they pay their fines, they leave, they do it again. Leal Hawani has taken on this role, running this program with dedication, commitment, and passion. She, she works hard for the safety, health, and well-being of the underage children in this community. She has worked with her colleagues, the Law Department, the Police Department, the Board of Education. Leal even established a relationship with the State, State of New Jersey Division of Taxation. Leal's back after maternity leave, and I thank everybody for coming in to see that she's back. She is here. We'll make sure Leal is here tonight with, with everyone. But while she was out, Jen Terwiliger and Kim Finkler maintained that program. A few months ago, the Health Department conducted 10 simultaneous inspections of establishments and found six were in violation. To date, these programs have generated over $50,000 for the City of Clifton. We want to present Leal with a plaque today, so I'm going to ask her to please come forward. Come on up here, Leal. Your fan club is here. The plaque reads, presented to Leal Hawani in appreciation of your outstanding leadership and commitment to the education, safety, and enforcement of vaping and tobacco regulations through Clifton's vaping, vaping safety program. Your efforts continue to strengthen our community's health and awareness, presented by Clifton Against Substance Abuse. You can, just before Leal says a few words, I just, I want to urge the governing body to continue to work with the Clifton Health Department and the Law Department to strengthen the ordinances that we have on the books for stiffer fines and penalties. CASA has been working diligently and speaking with our state legislators to assist in this also. We've actually got a meeting in November with our, with our Assemblywoman. In March and April, the Clifton Health Department, in collaboration with the New Jersey Division of Taxation Special Investigations Unit, set up by Leal, conducted an inspection of two different establishments, resulting in the confiscation of product and the issuance of summonses and fines. Folks, this doesn't happen by accident. This does not happen by accident. Leal coordinates this, she's committed to it, she's got a great team of people working with her in the Health Department, her leader is, is, is one of the best, and she helps drive this program and then tracks the results. Let's give Leal another great round of applause.
Wow. It's truly an honor to receive this award and to be recognized for the work that we do in vaping education and enforcement. And I say "we" because this is truly a collaborative effort. CASA is one of the most dedicated groups that I have had the pleasure of working with, and the Health Department is beyond grateful for their constant support and commitment to providing effective substance use education and resources to the community. I am so grateful to be part of this mission with you and to share your passion. Together, we've been able to reach thousands of Clifton students, giving them the knowledge and resources that they need to make more well-informed decisions. We've also made strides in holding our tobacco establishments accountable, deterring them from selling tobacco products to minors and selling flavored vapor products, which unfortunately are attracting our youth and setting many of them for lifelong challenges with adverse health effects and addiction. I want to thank my supervisor, John Beagle, all right, and my colleague, Jen, Jen Kidd, Jen Terwiliger, who I have the utmost respect for as my mentors. I am so grateful for your support and encouraging me in my efforts and motivating me to keep going and doing this work despite some of the challenges and the resistance that we face. So this award is for really all of us. I have a wonderful, wonderful team. And I'm grateful to all of my colleagues for their assistance with the education and the enforcement efforts. So as Tom mentioned, this is actually my second day back from maternity leave. I am now a mom to two young boys, Omar and Rami. So it is my first week back, and I realize that this mission has become deeply personal for me, and I am committed to doing everything that I can to protect their future and to protect the future of all children in our community. And as John likes to instill in our department, if we change one person's mindset or path, every effort is worth it. So thank you again so much, Tom, Patty, Robin, anybody here from CASA, for your support and dedication, and to the mayor and the council for, for this honor. Thank you so much.
You guys are up to present. Thanks, guys. Sorry, we like our photos.
Mayor?
Yes.
As we're ending this, if there is something we can update on these costs, because I do agree with Mr. Whittle said, the cost is cheaper on the fines, can we have something on the agenda next meeting to update?
I second that.
Upgrade those.
We're working with the Health Department with that now. I don't know if we'll have something for the next agenda, but shortly.
Yes, because that is true. It's almost like on some of these fines, it's cheaper to pay the fine, so there's no deterrent.
Absolutely.
So we can get something for next agenda that we can update those fines? Let's have it, please.
And I know we've had this discussion before, but in case something has changed, we see these smoke shops opening up on every corner. I mean, it's a disgrace. And John, I know you're shaking your head. Big problem, huge problem for our youth, and if there's anything we can do to limit it, let's look at it, because it's not good. Thank you.
Okay, and we have one last presentation that's actually going to come to us. We have with us Sandy Lazzara, she's the deputy director, the commissioners of the Passaic County, and she's going to present us with a $200,000 check by the Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for the use of Washington Park playgrounds. So Sandy, I know it's a ceremonial check, but, you know, we always ask the county for stuff, and actually the county's been coming through for us. Sandy, would like to, if you could bring it up and, yeah, you want to say something too, Sandy? Yeah.
There's my gold bar.
No, go, go up to the podium. I'll hold as you go up to the podium. Yeah. No, she won't. Hold on, get back. Then you can say something.
Hey, everyone, here we go.
And Sandy, if you could just say a few words at the podium for us, because we appreciate that, you know, people always say the county and Clifton, now the county's really stepping up to the plate. We've been getting a lot of donations from the county, and this is, this is great to have. I mean, we really appreciate this, helps our parks.
I'm so happy to be here tonight to present this check, because it's, it shows that Clifton and the county have the same thoughts about how we help our kids. And Councilwoman Sadra Kula was just mentioning kids, right? We have to take care of our kids. And the best way to do that, and one of the ways, is through this $200,000 check to redo the playground, the Washington Park playground. I know you have great plans, new equipment, and up-to-date surface at the bottom rubberized, correct? ADA accessible, everything that we could possibly want for kids to, to have fun and to keep them safe, that is what you put in your application. And we were so happy to work with the City of Clifton to make this dream a reality. So I wish everyone the best of luck with this check, and to know that, I think the best part is when we drive past that playground, we'll see the kids playing and having a good time, and what's better than that? So thank you for letting me bring that check to you, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Sandy. And please, thank the commissioners for us. Thank you. We really appreciate it. Okay, so that concludes our presentation part of the meeting, so we're now back to business. First, we have the approval of the minutes, please.
So moved.
Second. Okay, communications from the city manager?
We have communications from the city manager, seen on the agenda, Mayor, and we have communications of the meeting minutes of Passaic Valley Water Commission of July 23rd, 25, special meeting minutes of Passaic Valley Water Commission of August 27th, 2025, meeting minutes of the Advisory Board of Health of September 9th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of the Environmental Commission of September 10th, 2025, minutes hazardous materials control board of September 17th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of the Clifton Traffic Safety Committee on September 18th, 2025. We have ordinances, second reading. 8041-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 349 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Permit Parking on Residential Streets and Municipal Lots, Article 1, entitled Residential Streets, more particularly Section 349-2, thereof entitled Restricted Streets for Lincoln Place.
Hey, public hearing, will you hold on this ordinance? Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if all, no one wishes to be heard, it moved the public portion to be closed, and this ordinance adopted on final vote.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Colloge.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Ordinance 8042-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Salaries and Compensation, more particularly Article 6, thereof entitled Confidential Officials and Employees, revises the eligibility for health insurance coverage and retire-
health insurance coverage and retiree benefits.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public portion and adopt the ordinance on second reading.
Second.
Discussion? I'm gonna have discussion of this, Mayor, before we do roll call. So, thank you, Mayor. So, again, before we do roll call on this, I want to again plead with my colleagues to please reconsider an amendment to this, that we will be able to grandfather in all individuals who are currently be affected by this ordinance change. So I'd like to make a motion to please amend that, if I can have a second.
I would second a motion to make it prospective.
Say that again?
You're basically saying anyone hired after the date of January 1st, 2026, would now be under these rules, but anyone who was hired three years ago, five years ago, under these rules, would still have the same deal that basically we gave, right? That's...
Yes, correct, thank you.
So I'll give that a second. Okay, I have a roll call.
Councilman Demato?
No to the amendment.
Councilman Gibson?
No to the amendment.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
No.
Councilwoman Pino?
I don't even know what words to say. Yes to the amendment.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
No.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Three yes, four no, motion failed.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as written on second reading.
Second.
We already have that motion in seconds, so we don't need to do it twice. But I do want to just point out while we're under discussion to my colleagues that historically Clifton is not paying market value to employees, and this was one of the ways of trying to balance that, so that in theory you can attract an employee who's got 15 years of service in another town, tenured in another town, and decides that they're gonna come here because, you know, for whatever reasons, the pay cut is not gonna affect them as much as the ability to have health benefits, and taking this away and turning it into, from 10 years to 20 years, is going to further limit our ability to fund qualified people to Man City Hall. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Absolutely not.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
No.
Four yes, three no, ordinance passed. Ordinance 8043-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," more particularly, Section 439-37 thereof entitled "Handicap Parking on Streets," deletes one handicap space.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public portion to be closed, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance passed, seven zero. Ordinance 8044-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," more particularly, Section 439-38 thereof entitled "Handicap Parking on the Streets for Private Residents at 11, Restricted Handicap Spaces."
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public portion to be closed, and this ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, ordinance passed. Ordinance 8045-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," more particularly, Section 439-38 thereof entitled "Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residents," deletes two, restricted handicap spaces.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public portion to be closed, and this ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, ordinance passed. Ordinance 8046-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," more particularly, Section 439-38 thereof entitled "Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residents," amend six handicap parking placard numbers.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public portion to be closed, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, ordinance passed. We have ordinances on first reading. 8048-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Salaries and Compensation," more particularly, Article 6 thereof entitled "Confidential Officials and Employees," Section 99-34 entitled "Minimum and Maximum Salaries Fix," sets new maximum salary range for management information specialist.
I'll move it on first, Mayor.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 8049-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Salaries and Compensation," more particularly, Article 6 thereof entitled "Confidential Officials and Employees," Section 99-34 entitled "Minimum and Maximum Salary Fix," sets new maximum salary range for deputy city clerk.
Move it?
Second.
Move it on first.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 8050-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Salaries and Compensation," more particularly, Article 6 thereof entitled "Confidential Officials and Employees," Section 99-34 entitled "Minimum and Maximum Salaries Fix," adds compensation for municipal housing liaison.
Mayor, I'll move it so that I can vote no.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Collojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
I'm gonna move, yes, move it on first.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
No.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Five yes, two no. Ordinance 8050-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled "Salaries and Compensation," more particularly, Article 6 thereof entitled "Confidential Officials and Employees," Section 99-34 entitled "Minimum and Maximum Salaries Fix," adds compensation for community affairs director.
Move it?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
No.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Collojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
No.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
No.
Mayor Grabowski?
No.
One yes, six no, ordinance passed.
Okay, these ordinances will be published in accordance with the law. The public comment portion will now proceed. Please listen very carefully. Please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Speaking is permitted for five minutes only. Please refrain from emotional responses either in favor or against the speaker. In order to maintain decorum, I request that no derogatory statements be made against any person. Members of the council are asked to refrain from responding to the public at this time. You may respond during your privilege of the floor following this portion of the meeting. If anyone wishes to be heard, please come up, state your name and address.
Mayor, just for efficiency's sake, since we have a large crowd here, I just want to also iterate that to make this easy, please sign in in advance if possible and line up along that wall.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes. Good?
Good. Good evening, Gary Perino, Mount Prospect. That was nice that we received $200,000. That check was great, but just to realize that it was $2.77 million in the bucket. Clifton got $200,000. I'm not good at math, so somebody can figure that out, but Little Falls got $198,000. I think we're the second largest city in the county, and Wayne got $450,000. So, you know, just a point of advice. Looking around, I was lucky enough to sit behind the mayor in the other room, and I get to see a lot of observant things. I saw the mayor talked very briefly to our city manager, and I heard the city manager say, "Done." I saw the legal department snap to, boom, 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 answering questions. I saw Councilman Latona ask some pretty powerful questions. I'm proud of that, and I, please, keep up the good work on that. Councilman Collojay, last meeting, you said something very profound. You said, "We should run this place as a business, the city as a business." If you wrote back the tapes when Councilman Coppoli was on board, you can see me saying the same thing. That's exactly what we should do. And in a business, having almost five decades in corporate business experience, there's a lot of things that go into running a business, the city like a business, honesty, transparency, accountability, things like that. And I just find it strange that whether it's you folks on the dais or residents asking questions, very few of them get answered, many of them fall into Tony Latona's black hole and never get seen or never get heard. As a resident, I would like to have my questions answered, and if they can't be answered right now, they should be answered at the next meeting. So what I'd like to suggest, Mayor, and it's gonna entail a little more work, is that someone be designated to record the questions, whether they be council or residents, make a list of them, put them online, designate, city manager will answer this, the police department will answer this, and add your five minutes to your personal talking session and read those questions. Yes, it's been answered, no, we can't answer that because it's a personnel matter, or we're working on this. The residents want to know that. That's true transparency. I would like to see that, and maybe listed somewhere that the residents can see that their questions are being answered. Councilman Gibson, good to see you. There's a little halo above you. I've always said that there's something angelic about you, and here it is. And Councilman, and Councilman Demato, I like the soprano look. I don't know if you're starring in a movie, but definitely you have the gangster look tonight. One thing I would like to say is that we need to put this health benefits thing to bed. As a resident, and I think everybody listening wants to know, just some simple questions. What was this health benefit? Was it for the councilperson and their spouse? Was it for the councilperson and their spouse and their family? Simple answer, whether it's the lawyers telling, or the mayor saying, or somebody saying, "I would like to know, I don't know, I hear these things, it's this, it's that, it's this." Please, let's put this thing to rest. Now, also, seguing into the, did someone use this for other purposes other than what it was intended? Not naming names, not anything like that, but we would like to know. We'd like to know if there was a violation, how much money the city was responsible for. So these are just simple questions. And is there any remediation if there was a problem? That's all I'd like to know. It's simple questions. As my, as, I don't even know anymore, I'm so frustrated with this. Please give us some simple answers. Yes or no is fine. Thank you.
Good evening, Janice Cuduto, Springdale Court. I'm here tonight because I am outraged and disappointed by the behavior of Ms. Pino. Behavior that crossed the line from public service into personal abuse of power. Holding public office is a privilege, not a weapon. When that privilege is used to punish, intimidate, or retaliate is not leadership, it's bullying, and that's exactly what you did. My husband, a hard-working city employee for Clifton for 21 years doing the landscaping position, was fired after Mrs. Pino's interference. He did his job honest and a dedicated worker, but personal grudges were put ahead of fairness. By the way, the DPW is charging more than my husband did. That's not public service, that's retaliation from you. As well as hurting my husband, Ms. Pino publicly tried to accuse Mr. Gibson's health issues for a raise of the city's insurance policy. How dare you try to put blame on Bill for his health issues? What is wrong with you?
Continue, she's not gonna answer.
Oh, okay. Well, no, she's not paying attention. This is something that no decent elected official should ever do. Disagree on a policy if you must, but to attack Bill's health issues is cruel, unprofessional, and beneath the dignity of this council. Even worse, you accepted full family medical benefits for over six and a half years, knowing that it was only for you and your husband, if you're married. This is misuse of public benefits and a violation of the trust of our taxpayers. You and your buddy Joe Collojay should seriously pay back the money to Clifton. Every resident here pays into that system, and they deserve honesty, trust, and accountability in return. Clifton deserves better. We deserve leaders that serve with integrity, leaders who want to build, not destroy. How the hell do you sleep at night?
Excuse me, excuse me, I don't think anyone heard what I said. You have no emotional responses. If not, we'll clear the courtroom, and the speakers will speak, and we'll only hear it. We can't have this back and forth, it's a pro and con. I asked, right before this, no emotional responses, fills the emotional responses. If someone comes up and gives us a word and we clap, it's okay, but you're going one person against another person, whether they're right or whether they're wrong, we can't have that. And we'll ask the court officers, if this continues, we're not gonna continue with this. So, please, let's have decorum here, let's have some respect, whether you agree with the person, you don't, you have to have some civility and some decorum in this room. Thank you, please continue.
Good evening, Mary Fran Simmons from Pershing Road. I haven't been up here since 2016, but after the meeting two weeks ago, I have no choice but to be up here and say what I have to say. Back in 2016, I came to the council asking for my neighbor's safety and quality of life. Mr. Gibson, you were the only one who showed you cared and had compassion to the issue I was presenting, unlike your present colleague who accused me of racism and hate. Mr. Gibson, thank you for your heartfelt concerns you have given to our city over the years and always being there for the people. Your integrity and your perseverance and realism are qualities rare in politics. My admiration for you will never waver. As for you, Ms. Pino, your words and actions during the last meeting disgraced the seat you sit in. I too want to know how you sleep. Remember, you... Remember, you serve all the people, not just yourself. Thank you.
Next.
Guy Mattson, Newgin Drive, Clifton, New Jersey. It's been a long time since I've been here. In fact, the last time I was here, I had hair like Tony Latona, so it's been quite a while. But based on watching last council meeting, I felt compelled to come here and talk about the insensitivity of a council member. In fact, seems like the three musketeers in the center there. I saw somebody compliment Bill about a halo. Three of the other council people, you know, admired that and smiled a little bit, and the other three sat stoically. It tells me something. It tells me that Clifton is no longer the city that cares. It tells me that this councilwoman obviously doesn't care about us, she only cares about herself. To out someone that has a medical issue that he's been battling, this man has given 50 years of his life, probably longer than he're alive, to the city of Clifton, and you treat him that way? You treat him that way? You should be ashamed of yourself, ashamed and bringing up benefits when allegedly you've been collecting family benefits for six and a half to eight years, when my understanding is that only the councilperson and their spouses are eligible. So if that's 20,000 for council and spouse-ish, and I don't know what it is, and families are 40, then do the math, folks. This lady owes the city of Clifton. Pino, pay it back! Pay it back! We talk about the city that cares. Let me tell you what kind of a guy Bill Gibson is. 16 years ago, my mother went missing, lived on 704 Broad Street. She vanished from my home at the Jersey Shore. Our sons played Mustang football, junior football, only knew him about a year. Do you know he dropped everything? Came down to Seaside Park to help liaise between law enforcement, our family, and our time of need? That is an example of a man who cares. That demonstrates the mantra or slogan of what Clifton represents. Not the type of behavior cautious. You made his wife that was sitting here, Bill hadn't been here in over five months, shows up, works for the city of Clifton through Zoom, you made her cry. And you sit up there with that smirk, with that disdain. I remember when you came to my house when you were running, asking for money, and I wrote you a check. I'll never write you a check again. In fact, the city of Clifton shouldn't elect you to dogcatch her, never mind council, and forget Congress. You'd be the worst example in the world to be in Congress. You've raised a lot of money, you've spent a ton. My understanding is that your campaign is actually in the red right now, based on some of your elect forms. And Joe Koloje, you're no saint either. My understanding is that you collect family benefits also. So I would love and request, city attorney, finance, HR, look into this, report back, let us know what's going on. Say it ain't so, Joe. Say it ain't so.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. I want to address what transpired at the last twice-monthly circus, also known as the twice-monthly council meeting. This council and town are a joke. When Clifton is in the news, it's never for anything positive. I have never seen such vile and disgusting behavior at the last circus. Ms. Pino, during the 2018 election, when invited along with other candidates to be interviewed at the FMBA Hall, you claimed that you didn't know that part-time workers receive benefits, which many of us would have a hard time believing, and that you would not take the benefits if elected. You also falsely claimed that you would second Councilwoman Sandra Kula's motion to eliminate healthcare benefits for part-time employees. If I go over my five minutes, Mayor, too bad, because I don't have the councilwoman's attention. She's looking down. I don't know if she's writing or on her phone.
She's taking those, and most people do.
Well, you did not second Councilwoman Sandra Kula's motion to eliminate the part-timer benefits, because by the time the first full council meeting came around on January 3, 2019, you had already signed up for the benefits. Wow. You spoke a falsehood for an endorsement, and you took the healthcare benefits you said you wouldn't take. Your claim at the meeting, the last meeting, was that the vote to eliminate council healthcare benefits was political retribution, which is absurd and false. You need to get over yourself. An individual healthcare plan costs the city approximately $20,000, and the cost of a family plan is around $44,000. Chapter 78 contribution is based on annual compensation. Council members pay next to nothing for the same plan that costs the police and firefighters thousands of dollars. And Chapter 99 code of the city of Clifton clearly states that only the council members and their spouses are entitled to hospitalization and healthcare benefits. Why did you, Ms. Pino, and Councilman Koloje have family coverage, and how did that slip through the cracks? And Ms. Pino, rumor has it that you have or have had foster children, and if that is the case, their healthcare benefits are provided by the state, not the city. And if you were enrolled in family coverage... I lost myself for a minute. That is quite concerning, especially if foster children were included in that coverage. And what about your husband slash domestic partner? I don't know if you're married, or he is your domestic partner. However, does he have a job and insurance? If you two are not married, domestic partnerships became effective on July 10, 2004, New Jersey. Therefore, you and your children could be covered under his insurance. And you continue to beat the dead horse, even tonight, about removing healthcare benefits for part-timers. And you, the mayor, you, the mayor, and Joe should have recused yourselves from the vote, since it directly affects you. Here is a quote from a North Jersey article. "Pino's comments about Gibson's health issues during the discussion angered her colleagues on the council and members of the audience at the meeting. She said it takes only a few catastrophic illnesses to raise the city's insurance rates and costs." And then she talked about Gibson's ongoing health issues. How dare you discuss Councilman Gibson's health issues? That is clearly a HIPAA violation that should have resulted, at minimum, in a discussion with HR. Councilman Gibson has attended meetings from his hospital bed, rehab, and from home. He has rarely missed a meeting. Whereas you attend meetings when you feel like it, show up late, and when you're in attendance, most of the time, you're looking down at your phone. I remember one meeting that Bill couldn't attend virtually, and you were a no-show for no apparent reason. If I remember correctly, it was a Tuesday after one of your events that took place the weekend before. We all understand, Councilman Gibson, why he didn't attend, but what was your excuse? And shame on you, Ray. That disgusting vitriol should have stopped immediately. But once again, you let Ms. Pino do whatever she felt like doing. Lastly, Chris, I want to commend you for speaking out at the last meeting about people trying to work you.
Okay, I have to stop you at this point.
That you won't be bullied and intimidated.
Excuse me, I have to stop you at this point.
Stay on course, Chris, in this corrupt town.
Thank you. Next, please.
Bart Servo, from Dumpy Delawana. They call me Dog Park Bart. First of all, I'd like to know what are municipal open space taxes that I'm paying for? Why am I paying for that? And second of all, I think anybody over 65, and if they own their own house, they shouldn't have to pay school taxes. My kids haven't used the school system in years. And where's my dog park? Now I'm not going to get a dog park. I'm going to keep hounding you and hounding you, and now what's going to happen is people are going to let their dogs run loose. So, Mrs. Pino, or Ms. Pino, whatever it is, after the other meeting, I know Bill Gibson since I'm a kid. I remember when he worked with his father as a dog catcher, and he became a cop. He actually went to the academy with my brother. So I know him a long time, and I've never seen anybody as dedicated to the town of Clifton as he was. I mean, that guy was all over the place. He even chased me a couple times. I got away, though, Bill. So I don't understand why you even said that. I mean, why would you even bring that up? His benefits have nothing to do with what's going on here. His benefits are done through the civil service. He's a retired cop, he paid his dues. So I don't know, you know, you've got a lot of class, but it's all low. That's your problem. That's your problem. You've got a lot of class, but it's all low. And when you, and I don't know if these are your kids, or whatever the case may be, but you know, I don't care about when it's their birthday, and if they're having a communion, and all of that stuff. All you're doing is wasting my time, and you're wasting everybody else's time. I don't care about your personal life. You're supposed to take care of the council. You're supposed to do things for the city, the city that cares, that really doesn't care anymore, like Guy said. I grew up in this town, I've been in this town for 60 years, over 60 years, okay? And this town has gone down the tubes. I mean, Passaic is starting to look better than Clifton. It's terrible, it really is terrible. Right through Delawana, Delawana does not get touched. Now you're talking about dumping money into Washington Park? Whatever happened to Duney Park? I got hazards there, that kids could break their legs. What happens to that? I mean, me and the city manager went over it, but it just blows over. It just blows over. And another thing, too, I've seen Councilman Latona, he's asked for documentations. Every other week, he asks for a documentation on something, and it's never produced. Why? Why? It's like you guys come to the meeting for the first time and you're reading the agenda. I don't understand this. You definitely don't act professional. Listen, I'm not a professional, so I don't care how I act, all right? But you, and you, and you, and you are supposed to be professional. You're supposed to lead, all right? And let me tell you, man, yous are no leaders. Most of yous, most of yous are no leaders. All right? I can't say it, but, because I was told not to, I can't curse no more. So somebody must have complained about it. Not that I curse, but I really don't care. But really, you're sickening, you really are. I mean, I had my run-in with you, and hopefully, or you and your old man, or whoever it was, I mean, look, we tried to sue each other, we went to court, and I wish I was earlier, because I wanted to sue, I really wanted to sue you and the city of Clifton, but I waited too long, and I screwed up. Is that a bad word, Ray? Screw up?
You can say that.
I can say that? Okay, thank you. But really, I'm going to say it again, you've got a lot of class, but it's all low. You really do. I don't think you, I don't think you know what it is to pay for things. I really don't, because I think you get your things subsidized. I think, I think personally, some way, somehow, you're on welfare, and somehow, you're living in Section 8. You don't own anything. I checked, you don't own anything, not in your name. Anyway, it might be in another name, but you don't own anything. You could sit up there and grin and smile all you want, all right? But someday, karma, baby, karma's going to get you, and I hope I'm there to see it. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Billy Prempa, Patterson, New Jersey, congressional candidate for New Jersey's 9th district. How are you, Rosemary? First off, I didn't come here to bash you, or come here to attack you, but I did come here to criticize you. As you can see, several constituents in your town have a very big problem with what you said about Councilman Gibson. I personally have a very big problem with what you said about Councilman Gibson. You framed it as if this was a political attack on your character, but the way that you carried yourself, you came out and attacked Councilman Gibson, a man who's given his life, who's given his time to this city, someone that I respect very, very highly. And several people have commented on it, several people have done Oprah requests, and they have seen that you are, or based on the documents we've seen, you are collecting benefits that should be entitled to a spouse and the councilperson. And because of that, you claim that your members on the council are trying to vote against you and retaliate. But the reality is, is it shows to me a lack of financial responsibility here in the city. Because while the city of Clifton has been kicking the can down the road for a very, very long time, this was one of the ways that they were looking to reduce some payments. And to see that, based on what I've seen, based on what several of the constituents have seen, that you may be taking advantage of that, I decided to look into how your voting history was. Like I saw you at the Clifton Council, I mean, the Clifton Street Fair the other day, I asked you, "When are we going to have a debate?" And you said, "Your voting record speaks for yourself." Well, the last month that I was here, back in August, August 6, I remember you were one of the members of the council that voted to increase the taxes by 10%, and thankfully, that got shot down. It is kind of mind-blowing to me, because I see that you're running for Congress, and I see that the way you're operating within the city, there's a lot of murkiness behind some of the things that you're doing, whatever benefits you're claiming, I'm pretty sure a lot of that will come out in the future. But what is public is I have been looking into your reports for Congress, and I find it very, by the way, I got your fundraising letter. You sent it to my house. I don't know why you sent that to me, because I'm not going to give you money, but you might want to find a better consulting team. Because based on what I saw, you raised $150,000, you blew through more than half of that, and you're $70,000 in the hole, and you're mailing to people like myself. So seeing how it seems, money doesn't seem to be an issue for you, so long as you benefit at the end of the day, I think that everybody that's paying attention to what's happening here in council, whether you decide to run for council again, which I don't think you have a snowball's chance, if you decide to run for Congress, I would implore everybody to pay attention to what Councilwoman Pino is doing, not just here in the council, but what she intends to do for Congress. Because you're not just representing Clifton, you're going to be representing 35 municipalities. And as it stands, the people in your own hometown are not very happy with you, Rosemary. Wish you the best of luck. God bless.
God, he's tall. I'm like Bart, I need my glasses. I'm here tonight, Liz Gagden, 346, Mount Prospect. I'm here tonight for two reasons. The first is in support of my dear friend, Bill Gibson. But before I get to that, I want to publicly thank two very special people. This is the positive thing, for all their continued support, for my late brother-in-law, Robert Gagden. First, it's Margaret in your senior citizen center. And the other is Kim Costellano, who's here tonight. You do not know the amazing job that they do to help people in this town. They both worked very hard to get him signed up to the services he needed, but they didn't stop there. Kim dropped off food regularly, and he checked on him regularly, to make sure he was okay. The family thanks both of you from the bottom of our hearts. Mr. City Manager, please do what you can to find a barn or a building within Clifton to help Kim, so she can continue helping people in need. Recently, she came to this podium begging you for your assistance. My heart broke for her. I watch these meetings at night, because I'm with my husband, who has medical problems. Please help her. That was very sad. That being said, I'm here tonight in support of Bill, or anyone else that goes through serious health problems, because I live it also every day. The last meeting was an embarrassment to all of you. But honestly, Rosemary, to make remarks regarding his medical condition and insurance usage was the lowest of the low. Both myself and Mr. Gibson worked very hard in the city of Clifton for more than 20 years. But honestly, Rosemary, to make remarks regarding his medical condition and insurance usage was the lowest of the low. Both myself and Mr. Gibson worked very hard in the city of Clifton for more than twenty-five years to deserve those retirement benefits and our medical. Part-timers and council families should not be receiving them. It's funny, the very people who scream to save money in these meetings are the ones taking it from the taxpayers. Under the old regime, why did they allow family members to receive benefits? Other than the council members, why? Let me tell you a little story. Two and a half years ago, I was forced to retire from Clifton due to my husband's severe health problems. I came here after that happened, with all my horror stories. I put my retirement in for May 1st, 2023. However, due to severe screw-ups by your personnel department, I had to rescind that date to June 1st, so they could undo all the one person's mistakes that they made. That included a ten thousand dollar miscalculation of my sick and vacation time. I never told you guys about that, which I had to pay back before they would release my retirement papers. Thank goodness for all the employees in City Hall now that person left to see greener pastures in the county. So here's my question. If I had to pay back ten thousand dollars because of a city mistake, why can't the council people pay back the amount we shelled out for the family plan during the time on the council? They clearly knew of the mistake, that the benefits were for the individual council people and spouse only. I guess that was just another mistake they swept under the rug for years by the last regime, not you, Gary, to benefit the good old boys. Ms. Pino, I was appalled at your remarks at the last meeting. They were heartless. Shame on you. I hope you never have to go through any traumatic medical issues with your family as we have, the Gibsons and myself. The Gibson family has been nothing but, but amazing throughout his ordeal. Bill himself has shown what a mighty oak, Phil, you're a mighty oak, true councilman, he really is. He made an effort to attend meetings through Zoom, even when his face showed how much pain he was in. He never let Clifton down, but you, Ms. Pino, did. He didn't deserve any rude comments about his condition by you. That was the lowest thing you could ever do. And Mayor Gravowski, you're a friend of mine. Please get a hold of that gavel that you so, you carry around and slam it down when things like this happen. I spent thirteen years as an elected official on the Board of Education with some of the great past board members. Matt Ward, he's here tonight, Kirrenta, Steve Atala, Wayne Demakoff, Bob Diarco, Norm Tahan, Ken Kernath, Jim Smith, and Mr. Coloj. Did we all get along? No. Were we disappointed when votes didn't go our way? Yes. We used to disagree and argue, especially if we had a different opinion. But nothing like this council. Get it going. The budget's coming up again. Start working together.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Howey, and I live on Meadow Lane in Clifton. I'm here to ask that the council pass the resolution I sent to all of you via email last week in support of the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act, S. 3672 and A. 4987. I'm asking this as a neighbor, not a policy expert, not an attorney, just someone who cares about this city and believes we all do better when everyone feels safe and respected. As you all know, Clifton is an incredibly diverse community, one of the most diverse in the state and the nation. That's one of the things I like most about living here. Our neighbors come from all over the world, they start small businesses, they're essential workers, they're raising families here, and they give Clifton its energy and its character. But we also know that some of our neighbors still live with fear. Fear of calling the police, fear of going to court, even fear of going to a city office, because they worry that contact with local government might somehow lead to immigration trouble or family separation. That fear hurts all of us. It makes people less likely to report crimes, to come forward as witnesses, or to get help when they need it. When that happens, our community isn't as safe. The Immigrant Trust Act would make permanent what's already been working under the Immigrant Trust Directive since 2019. That directive has allowed local police to focus on protecting people, not on acting as immigration agents. It's built trust. It's helped victims and witnesses come forward. It's made communities across New Jersey, including ours, safer. Passing this act and this resolution supporting it is really about public safety and common sense. When everyone in Clifton feels safe talking to the police, everyone benefits. And I want to stress something else. This is actually good for our police department as well. We all know that they're already stretched very thin with an immense amount of responsibilities. They don't need to be pulled into federal immigration work. That's not their job. Their job is to protect and serve the people who live here, all of them. The Immigration Trust Act keeps that clear. It lets our officers focus on the work they signed up to do, keeping Clifton safe. A couple of weeks ago, I also spoke to the Clifton Advisory Committee on Civil Rights, and while I will not speak for them, I was glad to see their openness to the idea. I think they understood that it's not just about immigration rights, it's about fairness, safety, and making sure that every resident feels they can rely on their city government. Over fifteen other towns and counties have signed this resolution as well, including Princeton, Patterson, Jersey City, Madison, and Essex County. They did it because they saw that trust between immigrant communities and local government isn't something that just happens. It's something you have to build and protect. Clifton has the opportunity to show that same leadership, to stand with our immigrant residents, to affirm that everyone here deserves equal treatment and dignity, and to make clear that our police and our city are here to serve the whole community. So I ask you tonight to take this step. Pass this resolution. Send a message that Clifton is a city where people look out for each other, where safety and compassion go hand in hand, and where no one has to live in fear just for being part of our community. That Clifton is a city that cares, just like our signs all over town tell us. Thank you for your time and for everything you do to make Clifton a stronger and more welcoming place for everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Good evening, council members, officials, and members of the Clifton community. I'm not here with any beef for anybody. I would like to, and I'll announce myself in just a second, I would just like to support my friend Jeff Howey. My name is Maria Williamson, I live on Fornelius Ave, and I serve as the Chair of the Clifton Advisory Committee on Civil Rights. I'm here tonight to urge this council to pass the resolution that Jeff just mentioned in support of the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act, a resolution that reaffirms our city's commitment to justice, dignity, and safety. As Jeff mentioned, Clifton is one of the most diverse populations in New Jersey and in the country, and our neighbors represent dozens of languages, cultures, and immigration stories. That diversity is not a challenge to be managed, it is our strength. Immigrants are not just part of Clifton's history, they are the reason for its continued vitality. They are the laborers, the mothers and fathers, the students in our schools, the small business owners, and the taxpayers who sustain our local economy and enrich our daily lives. But across the country, and even here at home, we are seeing a dangerous rise in fear and panic. Families are being separated, workers are being harassed, and mothers are living in quiet terror that a knock on the door could change their lives forever. Community members are sending their kids to schools here with their birth certificates and their backpacks for fear of never seeing them again. These are stories that are told to me directly. And despite the logic and reassurances from officials elsewhere, what we are seeing unfold in communities like DC, Chicago, New York, and LA tell a different story. People who should feel safe turning to law enforcement or city services instead fear their doing so could put them or their loved ones at risk. They deserve better, and so does Clifton. The Immigrant Trust Act builds on the state's 2019 Immigrant Trust Directive and simply codifies those protections into law. It says clearly, no New Jersey resident should have to choose between their safety and their freedom. This is about public trust and whether our immigrant neighbors believe that their local government will protect them or persecute them. When fear replaces trust, our community suffers. But when we lead with courage, we strengthen the very fabric of our city. That brings me to something that I use in my own leadership, the 2060, the 2060/20 rule of change. In any movement, twenty percent of people resist the change, another twenty percent are on board, and sixty percent are open to change but may need more conversation. So tonight I ask you, where do you fall? Whether you're one of Clifton's leaders among the twenty percent who act decisively, or the sixty percent, the Clifton Advisory Committee on Civil Rights stands ready to work with you. We are more than willing to collaborate on language, to address concerns, and ensure this resolution reflects our city values, including having conversations with our community policing and the wider police department. But make no mistake, passing this resolution is not just symbolic, it is a statement of courage. It tells the mothers who worry each morning as they send their children to school, the workers who contribute quietly, and the children who call Clifton home, that the city sees them, values them, and will protect them. We cannot control what happens in Washington, but we can control what happens here. By supporting the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act, Clifton can help ensure that every resident feels safe seeking help and contributing fully to our shared future. DC, Chicago, and LA deserve better, and so does Clifton. Let's make sure our city continues to be a place where justice, dignity, and inclusion are just words in this resolution, but values that we live by. And I'd like to end by reading a poem. It's called "First They Came" by Martin M. Mahler. "First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cameron Hebron, 61 George Russell Way, also with the Clifton Civil Rights Advisory Committee. I'm here to also support the Immigrant Trust Act. And I don't really have much prepared, but just from an emotional perspective, and as someone who grew up in this city, who went to Clifton High School, this city's diversity is one of its biggest strengths. Being able to go down the street, hear a conversation in Arabic, Polish, and Mandarin is amazing. It's a microcosm of the rest of the United States. This Immigrant Trust Act not only reinforces the work that the state has previously done, it sends a message to our immigrant communities that we care about them and that we will not stand for discrimination or any biases. On top of that, it defends the city against any liability in the case that someone who isn't an immigrant gets taken, as we are seeing in the news. This city means a lot to the people who live here, especially the immigrants that call it their home. You could see that in lots of the restaurants, the markets, that everyone in the city patronizes, especially considering how there's a Polish market and a Chinese store right next to each other. These are all important immigrant communities to Clifton. And I'm just pleading to you guys to adopt this resolution, to come to us, to work on the language. We are your advisory committee, we're ready to work with you guys as council now, and you know when our meetings are, and that goes to the rest of the town. The Clifton Civil Rights Committee over this next year is going to be recruiting again, so if anyone wants to give their voice or wants to pitch in here and there, feel free to reach out to us. Also, with the rest of my time, I'd like to also highlight some of the work that the Health Department has done. I also sit on CASA, and week after week, month after month, for the last two, three years I've been there, we've been talking about this vape issue. It's good to see that you guys are being proactive about it, but the Health Department needs the teeth to get the job, their job done. And that's my time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is William Gooman. I am president of the Supervisors Association of Clifton, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of the DPW workers in the IBW Union. First off, I'd like to thank you for recognizing us as essential workers, but I want to address benefits that workers are now being denied. In past practice, workers with ten years of service working have received ten years of benefits. People were told at the time of the hiring that they would get these benefits. Now they are taken away. We would like to have these workers grandfathered, and new employees in 2026 would start with the new rules. The cost of the benefits is hardly costing anything, because Medicare covers most of the costs, and the retirees will still contribute to the secondary insurance you offer. Plus, now most of the workers are paying too much already for our insurance. Seems like the city follows State Chapter 78 only when the parks work against us, not for us. The workforce, the DPW, and City Hall are the backbone of the city. Most not making much money and deserve a little something for all their hard work. I also hope that layoffs and furloughs are not necessary, the cost savings will be minimum, the lowest, we're the lowest-paid group in Clifton. I would like to see buyouts for older, higher workers, because that would save more money than going after the lowest-paid workers. I hope with me retiring after forty-three years at the end of this year, we saved some jobs of our workers. We have some small issues, hoping we can straighten out the city manager, and work with my association being compensated correctly. Look forward to talking with him. And I just want to say, thank you for listening. May God bless you and keep you all healthy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Taylor, 1149 Boonford Avenue. I am the business representative of IBW Local 1158 that represents your white collar and your DPW, I'm sorry, your DPW employees here in the city of Clifton. First and foremost, I want to take the time to thank you for finally honoring these people. Because during COVID, when they were out there picking up that trash and going into people's houses and getting exposed and them dying, everybody turned the other way. Everybody turned the other way. When they're out there in the hurricanes, when they're out there in the snowstorms, everybody else is sitting safely, warm, and comfortable in their homes. These are the people who clean those streets. These are the people who pick up those fallen tree leaves, and they are truly as much first responders as anyone else, whether they're police fire or anything else, because without them getting those roads ready, none of those other agencies move. So thank you once again. And ladies and gentlemen of DPW, thank you for all that you do. I came to talk on one issue, I didn't actually know they were going to be here, but I'm glad I was here for this, because it's an honor to represent them. The second issue now I want to speak on is, I didn't know I was going to speak on this either, but Billy Gooman, one of our former members, who now transitions into the Supervisors, touched on this, and so I'll follow up on it. IBW actually put in place something to prevent exactly what Billy is addressing. We have an agreement that was made, the municipal council, that every single solitary employee who comes to the city of Clifton would receive a letter noting their steps in every single solitary thing, and that when they were given that in personnel, a union representative would be there to sign off on it to make sure they were being given the correct information. We had this problem several years ago, when the city allowed members to retire, then came back and said, oops, we made a mistake, we wound up going to arbitration, and the city lost. Why? Because of the misinformation. You're going to wind up in that situation again if you don't correct this problem. You cannot have people giving employees the belief that they can do something, then at their last moment say, oops, we made this mistake, we misread what was in the contract. This needs to stop, and it needs to stop now. Finally, the actual issue that I came here for today is, we have been inundated over the last two days with calls about, item on your agenda, to change the vendor for the health coverage. Obviously, we know the extraordinary unspecified service agreement is something that you can do, and we're not questioning that. But the members have some real questions. The current vendor has been here for twenty-some-odd years, they have a relationship with the members, they have a relationship with your employees, they know their families, they know their situations, they have helped them through heartache, they have helped them through loss, and the members want to know what is going to happen. They also have a program that was brought in about a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half, called the 360+ Program. This program is a pre-tax program, where these employees are putting money into insurance policies, into medical indemnification. into insurance policies, into medical indemnification policies, accident policies and all, all pre-tax. A lot of these things are directly connected to AIDS. If you're going to cancel them now, what happens to the year and a half that they have invested in? Has anyone said, are we going to find a way to handle this? Or what do we do? Are these employees just going to be told, oh, well, screw it. You got to go out, and we're going to do this all over again? These are issues that really genuinely need to be addressed. We have no preference of vendors and things in this matter, but the employees clearly want you to consider some of these questions before you make a decision that could severely impact the tax ramifications, the health insurance, and more importantly, these investment practices and stuff that the city had them invest in thinking they were going to be long-term. And now it seems to be nobody can answer exactly what's going to happen. I want to thank Mr. DeMarzo and his group. We sent some information earlier. They jumped right on it. They got everything out. And Mr. Bailey from the group got back another some information. I want to affirm that this is no slight on anybody in any shape, form, or fashion. But the employees want to know that you, as the legislators, have thought this through. You have answered the questions of what's going to happen before you let this happen. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And Madam Clerk, I'm going to leave copies of this letter.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Faithweb, Strangeway Terrace. I'm coming tonight as a follow-up for the last council meeting in which I witnessed such blatant disrespect for a fellow colleague of yours. Not only Rosemary did you speak about the health issues that your colleague, Mr. Gibson, has been going through, but Mayor Grabowski, it's your job to control this meeting. Use the gavel. You had no trouble trying to shut down Mr. Latona and Mrs. Sadra Kula, but you couldn't tell Rosemary to quit it. But you could tell us tonight, don't clap if anybody speaks. It's not fair. The control of this meeting was clearly in your hands, and you were either unable or possibly unwilling to fulfill your duties. There's been a lot of discussion about what the benefits cost the city. So out of interest, I op-ed it. Ray Grabowski's got a policy of $17,700. $790 is his out-of-pocket for that yearly policy, leaving the city with $18,900. Then Rosemary and Joe have a $43,883 bill. They pay $13,0560. And the city pays, contributes $42,588.12. That's not just pennies. Well, Joe, you can shake your head, but I have the Oprah response. That's what the city sent me. So if it's wrong, you have medical, dental, and pharmacy. You have a life insurance policy of $50,000. As of two weeks ago, the ordinance just read, only you and your spouse. So I have a few questions. The questions are of interest in transparency and fiscal responsibility and fairness to the taxpayers. Eligibility, awareness, and oversight. Where were council members, why were council members who received family health benefits unaware that the coverage was supposed to extend only to the council member and spouse, not dependents? Were council members ever provided written documentation or clarification from HR administration or city attorney outlining eligibility limits? If they were not informed, who's responsible for insuring this? Cost and duration of the coverage. Over how many years were these extended family benefits provided? Can the administration provide a detailed report showing the total cost of the medical, dental claims paid under these family plans, broken down by year and council member? What would the total financial impact to the city be if we calculated all the claims and premiums paid for ineligible family members over the full duration of this benefit? Accountability and restitution. Has the city sought legal or financial guidance on whether the cost of those benefits could be reimbursed or should be reimbursed? If family coverage was received in error, will the council members involved be required to repay the city for the difference between the individual's spouse plan and the family plan? Has there been any review or audit initiated to ensure compliance with benefit eligibility rules going forward? Policy and prevention. This is the most important part, I think, in my mind. What means will be implemented today to prevent this from happening again? Not just, we've protected you guys, but to city employees. Will the city update its policies and require council members to... Well, this is not appropriate now since you just passed that. Will there be a public reporting or periodic audits of benefits received? And will the community be made aware? Bill, my heart broke for you as I sat home recovering from surgery, watching your face and what you went through. Bill Gibson is one person that will drop everything, pick up a phone call, no matter how sick he is, and say, how are you? He is one person that calls our house periodically, say, how's Kate? She had surgery. How's she doing? When I know he's sick and possibly in the hospital. It is just disgusting and deplorable. Maybe as council members, you shouldn't be so concerned about the time you'll get out of the council meeting. Come on time. Come to every meeting. That'd be a hoot. If this is a job in your mind, I was always taught, and I'm thankful for my mother, God bless her, if you start work at 6:30, you put your backside in that chair at quarter after 6:00. Your pencil's sitting next to you. You are, your coat is off. Your backpack is underneath the table, and you're ready to go. It's time that you decide you're going to work for the city, not for carnivals and not for the other stuff that's going on.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Prem Tandon from Delaware area. I'd like to talk about revenue generation, mostly about the parking permits. So it used to be that we got the parking permits, and I'd never need to go get one again. Where we're at now, I kind of feel like we're being taxed every year for no reason, just to park around our own street. Meanwhile, enforcement could be better. I'm not saying it's bad. It could be better. Commuters are just taking the 11:00 AM train. So where are we, where are we supposed to park? You know, when we come home or whatever. My neighbors can't park on the weekends, okay? Because people are using it to get to Secaucus, New York City, to go to MSG. Meanwhile, we don't even have a bus to get back after 1:30 AM. So maybe you could talk to NJ Transit about that. Instead, parking restrictions should be 24/7 for these areas. You should enforce it 24/7. You should sell permits to, or you should sell, actually, parking passes for those NJ Transit's areas where it's free. Finally, uh, next page. Why does this always change pages so slow? Okay, yeah, about that New Jersey Transit bus or train. If you had it from Friday to Sunday morning, once an hour, that'd be amazing. Passaic has that. I mean, Rutherford has that. I think it'll help cut down on drunken driving, which means Secaucus will get a lot less money, okay? And, you know, again, those parking passes will then work. Next page, okay. A little thing about vape shops. They're not vape shops. They're actually head shops. You can get a lot of other stuff there. I'd like you to leave parenting to the parents. There's a lot of other things. And most of those stores operate under the guise of convenience. Just like going to a convenience store, I can save a lot of time by just picking up something I broke, okay? And occasionally, they order stuff. Finally, the MX 908 that you guys want to buy for the police, that is a spectrometer that is basically for border control. You're going to buy a device that's $130,000. Is it going to, is it going to live in somebody's car? What's the maintenance on that? Somebody, that thing has a supreme amount of maintenance. You do it wrong, that device is now a paperweight. My mom used to work for the FDA, gas spectrometry, GC. There's a lot of those machines that break because someone doesn't know what they're doing. So on top of that money, are you going to take money to train people to do it right? What hap, are we going to have a warranty on that device? Anything goes wrong, do we have to pay another 130 grand? Or are we renting it? Which is probably going to cost a lot more. Oh, I still got a lot of time. Okay. Dunne Park. I think it could be better. But could you stop putting trees in there that die every summer? Or at least fence it off a little bit? Maybe put some concrete blocks so that way dogs don't pee on it? I got a dog. I make sure it doesn't pee on the trees. But, you know, other people are going to do that. And I think that'll help stop killing the trees. Maybe you don't have to buy as many, or you can put somewhere else. I'd also like to say thank you for the captioning. And also, good evening, councilmen, council people. Gary, love you. And hi, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Gary. I would just be remiss if I didn't thank everybody who has been behind me for the past few years. The food that people sent to my house, the cards, thousands of cards, the phone calls, the text messages, I can't even keep up. If my husband could be a police officer, till this day, he would be. Why did he leave the Clifton Police Department? Because they were taking away his benefits. He was going to become a lieutenant. He couldn't become a lieutenant because he was going to have to start paying his benefits. But he could leave as a sergeant and have benefits until he was 75. He said, Robin, I'd rather leave now and keep my benefits than to become a lieutenant, which was his dream. But he thought about his family. He thought about his kids. He thought about me. Now, he worked hard. He missed Christmas. He missed Thanksgiving. He missed holidays. He worked for those benefits. These DPW men, these Clifton police, these firemen, they're working very hard every single day for their benefits. City Council, I know you work, but not as hard as these people, police, fire, and DPW. I am asking you, leave them alone when it comes to what they have right now. Leave it from, to 20 years. Don't take it down to 10 years. They work hard, just like you worked hard, Bill, just like you worked hard, Tony. The council had this, they may work hard privately, don't get me wrong, but not as hard as these people. These people deserve everything they get. Bill, you deserved everything you get. And Councilwoman Pino, I was very upset two weeks ago, but I have to say, I overcame that with my faith in God, with what he led me to, by him still keeping my husband around. But you don't know what we go through every single day. It's hard. My husband is technically bedridden. I pray more people call him, stop over their house to see him. Thank you, Tony, for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Ahmed Abdul Baki, Richfield resident. Two meetings ago, I made a statement regarding the vigil that was held here, and I was unable to stay here to hear the responses, and I was unable to make the last council meeting. So I come to respond to those statements made on September 16th. City Manager DeMarzo had mentioned that the vigil was in a city organized event, and I appreciate that denying the event from occurring was explored. And at the same time, understand the ultimate decision was made based on legal obligations. As many of you are well aware, the man being honored and memorialized that night was someone who represented hate. And because of this, the statement from the city would have been appreciated to clarify that this wasn't a city event and that the city does not share his views. Doing so would help prevent marginalized members of the community from being further alienated. This supposed patriot's views include that the Civil Rights Act was a mistake and that black women don't have brain processing power to gain employment on their own merit. Is the city willing to make an official statement that they do not support his views and statements? There have been racist remarks from the public that go unchallenged by council. On June 3rd, a member of the public asked if Councilwoman Pino was on government assistance. The last meeting, someone called her event, which celebrates her Latin heritage, a three-ring circus. It's tonight, a barrage of racist remarks. There should be no tolerance for racist remarks being made as this council sits silently to witness it. But it continues every meeting, maybe because some of the council members agree with it. To mention Black Lives Matter or Palestine at the last meeting as a comparison to the vigil creates further division. BLM exists because of over 400 years of oppression towards the black community with slavery, Jim Crow, mass incarceration, and police brutality, amongst many other things, injustices that still exist to this very day. Mr. Egan stated that the protest was held for the Palestine Gaza Strip thing. Words are important, Mr. Egan. The correct word is genocide, not thing. It's a genocide of the Palestinian people that's been ongoing for decades, not just for the last two years. Injustices still exist to this very day. And because we did not rectify either from its root cause, we as citizens of humanity must continue to call out injustices. On that note, Councilman DeMaro mentioned two meetings ago about the death of innocent Palestinians, and last meeting, the two-year commemoration of October 7th. I just want to clarify that it's not about aboutism. Using the analogy of colon and breast cancer does not apply here, as you stated in the last meeting, Mr. DeMaro, because it's about getting to the root cause of the problem. October 7th, which is occupation, ethnic cleansing, apartheid, face displacement, and genocide of the Palestinian people. Like I said earlier, matters, words matter, especially when we have a large Palestinian community here in Clifton. If you don't have the right words to recognize what's going on, we will, we will never act to end it. Rather than end health benefits for select individuals, which is politically motivated and bicker over peanuts, we can exert energy to stop the billions of dollars funneled out of our federal and state systems to bomb tents, snipe children, and murder residents, collecting aid at food distribution sites. Our taxes have paid for the bombing of every school, university, and hospital in Gaza. There will never be an end in sight if we don't act in having the right words to say what is happening. We are paid close to $40 billion the past two years to an occupying power to murder civilians. That occupying power has approximately the same population as New Jersey. The amount of $40 billion is more than half of our state budget. All this with no end in sight if we don't act, but only after using accurate language to describe what is happening. I welcome paying higher taxes if it meant individuals get health benefits, or we can collectively get together to stop the federal and state government from giving away our tax dollars heedlessly for destroying a people rather than bicker over peanuts. Israel is not only committing the most extreme oppression against the Palestinians with our tax dollars, our money is being sent to an entity that is a haven for pedophiles, drug trafficking, organ harvesting, sex trafficking, and blood diamonds, along with a myriad of other, most heinous of crimes. My question to you is, which council member will condemn the atrocities and war crimes of the Israeli apartheid regime? Who is willing to, who is willing to talk with Congressman Poe to stop sending weapons there and have our, have her stop taking funds from the Israeli lobby to make an objective decision? And my initial question, is the city willing to make an official statement that they do not support the views and statements of the individual, the individual of the vigil was held for?
Thank you. Excuse me? First of all, there's no comments from the thing, but it just beeped. I stopped him.
Last but not least, my name is Kathy Linker. I have no written speech, but I just felt compelled to come up here. There's so much ugly in this world. My parents raised me to do unto others as you would want them to do unto you. Bill Gibson is a dear friend of mine, as are many of the people on this council. I would not wish illness on anyone in this world. I have suffered through very personal illness of my husband for three years. It's brutal. It whips you apart, watching what Robin goes through on a daily basis, day in and day out. 2:00 in the morning, phone calls with her to try and help her, keep her sanity and keep her hopes up. I wish that on no one, ever. So please, as a council and as a city, can we all try and do the right thing and wish good on each other and treat each other as you would want to be treated? good on each other and treat each other as you would want to be treated? Because God doesn't like ugly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone who is supposed to be heard? Okay, we have no one on Zoom, so I have a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public session.
Second. City manager, do you have any?
No comment, Your Honor.
Well, actually, Mayor, if I may, through you to the city manager, there is something that I do need the city manager and Legal to address that's regarding some of the comments that were made that pertains to the city. So, Mayor, through you to the city manager and Legal. There was a comment made by one of the speakers, Gina Scudoodle, that said that I, Councilwoman Pino, had her husband fired. So I just want to get clarification, because I actually never brought up her name or her husband's name out of respect, right? With that said, I didn't realize that Councilwoman Rosemary Pino had the power to have someone fired. So I just need administration to clarify exactly what happened with this gentleman, this young lady's husband and the business.
Gina, you can't. Gary, do you want to answer that or no?
Could you please?
I will just say that the councilwoman did not have anything to do with the separation of your husband, and that it was-
Gina, Gina.
So-
Gina.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor. Can you please-
Listen, Rosemary, we're gonna do this in your time.
No, 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 no. This is not in my time. I only have five minutes, and this whole meeting was about me, so it's-
Mayor, I think I'm gonna hold my comments at this point, because there seems to be some disagreement relative to how it traversed or how it came into my office. And though it was discussed through council, I'm gonna hold my comments so we don't have this banter.
Thank you. All right.
Well, Mayor, if I may, I just-
Rosemary, he's gonna hold his comments.
Just for cl- no, because this isn't point. It's not something you can really hold your comments on, because you're alleging that I, one councilperson, had someone fired. And I just want you to be able to clear the record, because just so we understand what we're talking about. This individual had a contract with the city to cut the lawns, okay, for those properties that go unattained. Now, here's the problem. This individual did not go through an RSP, was charging anything they wanted to charge, didn't have insurance with the company, and this is all what Legal did, right? Because, so, I had nothing to do with that. There's a process. We require all our businesses that do business with the city of Clifton to have insurance, right? To be insured. God forbid something happens. Number one. Number two-
I have to stop this right now. Rose, I have to stop this.
No, because this is pertaining to this.
Wait, wait, wait. I gotta stop this now.
It's pertaining to this.
This is not the forum to go back and forth in a public debate. It was a process. It was brought to council.
For the record, I'm one person. I can't have anyone fired.
No, we're not gonna have the debate. First of all, we're gonna go to-
No, that's okay. Next thing, because this is also relating, and this is not personal comments. This is, again, I want to go to Legal. The public is alleging that myself and Councilman Colloge have done something illegal and taken benefits that are not, that we're not entitled to, right? And just so that everyone understands, Legal was already looking into this matter, because as you guys know, the ordinance does state counsel and spouse. However, this writing or this ordinance was written way back when, when all insurance policies were either individual or person and spouse, which included the family. So I'm not the first. This is past presidents with not just Councilman Colloge, but when they went back on the record, there were other council members that took for counsel, spouse, and their families if it applied. So, again, I don't know if, Tom, you want to share some of that research, because nothing was done illegally, but with that said, anything you want to add to that, Tom?
No, I'd just like to just confirm that we did go back and look at records as far back as we had, and it seemed as if the past practice was that council member and spouse were covered by family. It was people that were on the council prior to anybody that's on the present council. But unfortunately, we don't have a lot in the way of records going back to when the ordinance was originally implemented.
I have to move on. Rose, you have to use this in your time. I'm gonna have to start with Councilwoman Sagrakula. I know, we got it mixed up last time.
No, I was started. Tony-
Tony spoke first, but you want to switch back and forth? It's okay.
Here we go. I should be last, but you want to get it over with, so this way somebody could have the last words. No problem.
If you want to go first, go first.
No problem. Tony went first last time, and I was supposed to, so it should be going the other way.
I'm just going what it says in here.
Whatever. He'll stop me, as usual. He'll know to use the gavel on me.
Tony, you want to go first?
I have no problem going first.
All right, go first.
Thank you to all the speakers who came out. Unfortunately, it is a sad day, a sad day, that what transpired at the last meeting, and yes, I did get loud. And would I do it again? Absolutely. Sitting at this dais and seeing Robin Gibson breaking out in tears and at the same time being angry. Why? Bill, you're a stellar person. You earned every benefit you got. For somebody to question it is quite disgusting. And yes, I don't care when the ordinance was written. It is the law. We all took an oath of office to uphold the law. One of those ordinances is that only a council member and a spouse can get medical benefits. Retaliation? Political retaliation? Since before I ran in 2010, I advocated to do, to eliminate that benefit. And Judy, you're right, and you read my Facebook page where you got that from. I sat at the FMBA with Rosemary and her campaign manager, Larry Grasso. She claimed she didn't know that council members and some part-time workers got healthcare benefits. She sat there and said she would not take those benefits, and I said the first thing I would do if elected was make a motion to eliminate those benefits, which, by the way, I did. But did Rosemary second it, as she told the FMBA for their endorsement? No. She took the benefits. My positions don't change based on endorsements, as I told the FMBA and I told the PBA. I am who I am, and when I believe in something, I will continue to fight for what I believe with. And it does save money. And should they, both Joe and Rosemary, pay these money back? Absolutely. The Attorney General is looking at a case in Montclair where a whistleblower came forward and revealed that council members were getting benefits. He's looking into that case. So don't sit here and anyone say this was retaliation. And I'm sorry, whoever said this was racist comments, you gotta be kidding me. That has nothing to do with race. This has to do with the law. Same way as our attorneys take an oath when they become lawyers. We put our hand on the Bible when we take an oath, every single one of us up here, to uphold the laws. What you'll see tonight, and I hope everyone looks at it, discussion item, I think it's three, witch hunts. Previous administrations, and Tony, you say it all the time, go and read the witch hunt that they did on me last council, filing ethics charges on me, which the state came back and said, "You had no right to do an investigation." And we had the complainant, who was our previous municipal attorney, be the complainant in all the paperwork, handpick the judge to do the investigation, and pay him more than what the going rate was, and then look at the judge's bill. Communication with the judge all the time, as well as communication with the outside attorney that filed the ethics charges. The state came back and said, "Not only are we throwing this case out, but Clifton, you had no right to do an investigation." So what did I ask? I asked for, and then they censored me. They demanded I stand in front of this council so they could try to humiliate me and humiliate my family name. Shameful, shameful. Well, tonight, I am gonna make a motion to rescind that censorship. And we'll see which one of the seven of us go along with it or don't, because they'll think they're a higher authority than the state. The state threw it out. But this is the witch hunt, and thousands of dollars. I believe the judge's bill was $9,000, and since I just got the bill, and tricky, the outside attorneys kind of hid it in other bills, what they were charging. It's a, and they redacted the bills. Could you imagine the provider of the services redacting the bills from the people who approved the bills? That's what we dealt with for 30 years, and it's stopping.
Councilwoman Letona.
Good evening, everyone. This is just painful, because I always try to start every meeting with good news. So it just needs to happen, because we need to heal, we need to move forward. These constant distractions, it's just, it's not good for the city, it's not good for a governing body, it's not good for governing. We have a packet here, mile-thick. We got so much debt we need to address and financial things. And so, starting off with congratulations again to Leala and Casa and the Health Department and the DPW, the county presenting a check, the tank pull on all the checks to Avenue of Flags and Clifton Cares and the Veterans Parade Committee. Thank you to all the good stuff that happens, you know? We gotta still focus on the good stuff. So, we talked about the ADA subtitles. We got the Turkish flag raising coming this Saturday, the 25th, the Halloween parade on the 26th. So tonight, when my time is over, I'm gonna ask Kathleen to poll the council. This governing body asks for Candyland sponsors to help offset the cost so more kids in our community could make the event. I know my council colleague, Mary Sagrakula, would like the event to be free, and that's our goal to push to next year. So after I'm done speaking, to Kathleen, please poll the council to make the fee for Candyland this year, $5 on behalf of JK Realty, who came forward to be one of the sponsors. Hopefully, next year, we can get two more sponsors and make it free. So that is gonna be my motion for my colleagues after my time is up. Next month, I'm gonna send out two dates for the two Tuesdays in between November to do evaluations on all those who fall under their governing body. We're gonna start that process and tell the administration to start doing them on department heads starting next spring. Budget process to the administration. Reminder, the report to council is due in December. We will not go through what we were put through last year. So the initial budget, I know you're working with your department heads, please make sure we have that initial budget for December for us to review for our meetings coming in January. We had to make some tough decisions tonight. One of them was changing insurance carrier. I don't have enough time to go through. I went back and forth on that, on having to make that decision. Election Day, November 4th, for those who haven't voted, I wore my red and blue tie tonight, because the end of the day, election day's coming up, and for all of our faults, we still live in the greatest country in the world. So everyone who hasn't already voted, please remember to vote. Liz Gagnon brought up, some of the other speakers brought from DPW. For a long time, career politicians and bureaucrats and cronies, we didn't hire subject matter experts. And a lot of the problems we have, grievances and arbitrations and lawsuits, is because we didn't hire people who, according to civil service, were certified to be in their positions. And we wonder why we're in this mess. So we're in the process of cleaning it up, folks, but it isn't gonna happen overnight. But we're trying to fix these things, but that's the hand we were dealt. And for those of us on this council who've been trying to clean that up, we've been attacked like you can't imagine. And I know the public sees it more and more. I know people who didn't support me and some of my colleagues in the past came and said, "We see it now." And boy, do you see it now. They don't attack you because they weren't doing anything wrong, folks. So it's getting fixed. DPW talked about buyouts. We talked about policing, fire, and some options. I will add DPW and city employees to that list, because I do agree, some of these buyouts, it's a win-win for the employees and the city. And we have some stuff in executive session to continue to that conversation. Faith Web, again, you brought up, again, if you don't hire subject matter experts, you get into this mess that we're in. To the Gibson family and all the speakers, I don't want to pour salt on the wound, but we just need to heal and move forward as a city. And I'm gonna probably ask my colleagues to have a special meeting next week, because we've got a lot of governing business to run. And we're not gonna get through it tonight. So that's all I have, and have a good night, everyone.
Councilman Colloge.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna start out with Mr. Gooman. I agree with what you said. Our word should be our bond. And tonight, we suggested that we make it prospective. Anyone hired after January 1st, 2026, would then be subject to the 20 years instead of the 10 years. Unfortunately, four people on the dais disagreed with that, and so the change was made. To Mr. Taylor, I also agree with you. DPW are unsung heroes. We only know about the DPW when something's going wrong. You guys, when you're on, you're like invisible to the city. And so I'm very pleased that we recognized your contributions this evening. As for the insurance company, I also agree with you that in order to save $700 a month, we're gonna move to a $25 million worldwide organization and hope that it provides the same personalized experience that you've had for the last two decades. Unfortunately, four people said it was better to move to that organization. So I hope that they're right on that decision. To Bart Servo, New Jersey Stay Program will pay 50% of your property taxes, up to $6,500. That will offset a very large chunk of the school taxes you're paying. If you've not applied yet, please apply. 65 years of age and income, that's at $500,000 a year. So pretty much any senior is gonna pretty much qualify for that program. So please take advantage of that. I did not see the proposed resolution that Mr. Howie and a few of the other speakers came up to speak about, but it sounds to me like it's similar to what our neighboring towns have already adopted as well. And so, assuming that the city manager has seen a copy of that, I would like to make a motion that we place it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Second.
And then I'm gonna split the, well, you know what, before I split the time, I want to make sure I get in this announcement. Boy Scout Troop 21 is having their annual spaghetti dinner this Sunday at St. Philip's, 12:00 to 5:00. $18 for an adult, $15 for a senior, $10 for kids between the ages of 5 and 11. Please come out and support our Boy Scout troop. These are the same kids that went out and built a ramp for the Gibsons. So they are worthy of our support. Then splitting time with the city manager over my last five minutes, through you, Mayor, to the city manager. Where are we with administration's furlough plan, and is the furlough plan inclusive of police, fire, or DPW for the 2026 budget year?
We had our initial meetings. Andy attended. The Labor Council attended. We had a very nice conversation and understanding with IBW, Mr. Taylor. We met with FMBA. We met with PBA. We do have one organization, the CSA, that still needs to sit down with us, but the initial conversations were very positive, were very, very beneficial to both sides. We understood the numbers, they understand the plight, and I believe we're gonna make some progress over the next several weeks.
So then, just to be clear, as Ray Lil came to the microphone at our last meeting and said, "Don't furlough or lay off police officers," how would that make any sense when you just hired new police officers? So you're saying that the administration's plan is to consider police officers in this furlough plan?
The furlough plan is considered to the 700-plus base employee- The furlough plan is considered to the 700-plus base employee population that we have. This is not the layoff plan, this is a voluntary furlough plan to assess what we have, assess buyout programs, assess different options relative to working with the employee population. But the furlough plan is for the entire population.
Because my recollection is that this council voted unanimously that we weren't going to look to touch police, fire, or DPW, and I may be mistaken, so I will make the motion again, that any 2026 furlough plan is not going to include the police, the fire department, or the DPW, who we just honored tonight.
That would leave about 100 employees.
I understand that, but the motion is to not touch police, fire, or DPW in the furlough plan. No one wants to give me a second? I can respect.
I'll second that.
So does it require a roll call?
Councilman Domato?
It's not on the agenda. Are we going to follow the rules as we always do, or are we making them up as we go along?
I stand corrected.
Any other?
I stand corrected. It is still my five minutes, and I stand corrected. I'll make the motion to place it on for a discussion at the next meeting, because I support the police, and the fire, and the DPW, and I think they deserve to find out if the rest of this dais supports the police, the fire, and the DPW.
All right, so we'll have that on for next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the last question I had was, where are we in the timeline for the revow?
Sorry, Joe. Councilwoman Pinno. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Before I start and I get into my comments, I need to address what has been happening in the past few weeks. There has been false inflammatory statements made on social media, and again, here today, meant to damage my name, reputation, and distract from the real work that we're doing here in the city. My legal counsel, including those in my DC advisors, are reviewing the situation and are on standby, ready to take whatever action is necessary to protect my rights and hold those responsible accountable. False allegations and spreading rumors are not considered free speech. They are violations of law and integrity. So, with all that said, because I refuse to let lies and negativities take focus away from what truly matters, and that's the people of Clifton. So, tonight, this council voted at an ordinance that would take away health benefits from part-time city employees, and change the retirement eligibility from 10 to 20 years for full-time city employees, without grandfathering in those people who have already served under the existing policy. These are the people who answer our phones, clean our parks, keep our programs running. They're not just employees, they're our neighbors, our friends, and the backbone of this city. And if we allow this to happen, it won't stop here. So, the gentleman who spoke is correct. Once benefits are taken from one group, which in this case, not talking about council, I'm talking about the confidential, which includes our DPW head, Jason, who's part of the confidential, which by the way, they haven't been given raises either. But, side note, it won't stop there. Once benefits are taken from one group, it becomes easier to take it from another. The next ones in line are our unions, the men and women who have dedicated their lives in keeping the city safe, strong, and standing. That's why they are here tonight, because they are fighting not just about the policy, it's about fairness, respect, and integrity. If they're doing it to us up here, individuals, elected officials, I'm a woman of power, the mayor, another council member, what makes you think they're not coming after you guys next? Again, what's happening right now is bigger than politics. It's about power being used to punish those who speak up. And I'll say this, if you do it to me, again, a council person, council members, your other, I'm sorry, if they do it to me, they do it to the confidential, again, why wouldn't they do it to the next in line, the unions? There should be a concern for every city employee, every union member, and every resident who believes in fairness, fairness and accountability. So, again, the fact of the matter is that my colleagues, for them in particularly, are not doing right by the residents who elected them here. They are operating out of emotion, which is the reason why, and out of respect to my colleague, I won't say the name, but has already told some of us up here, "Sorry, you guys are collateral damage," because this is political retaliation. So I'm going to ask Mike, if you can please put the camera over to my family, because this part is for you guys, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but to my family, I'm sorry, Mayor, can we hold on my time since the audience wants to? We're good? You paused my time? Okay, thank you. So, and this is to my family, my husband, my kids, I know this hasn't been easy, all the late nights, the stress, and the attacks, but let this be a lesson about why we do this. We fight for what is right, because fighting for others is also fighting for us. We show up because kindness and courage does actually matter, even when it's hard. And when times like this, it's the times that we really have to show up. This is part of something bigger, guys. It's part of service, it's part of democracy. So I can't imagine how hard it was for you guys to hear all that, but I want you to know that this is not in vain. Democracy? I'm sorry. Democracy isn't perfect. I'm sorry, can you pause my time, because the mayor wants me to say something? What am I saying that's wrong, Mayor?
You're over your time.
How am I over that time? I'm not over my time.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that...
So can you please give me back my time?
It was paused, all right.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do you want it back on? Yeah. Either should we put it back on or continue?
No, I thought you said it beeped.
That was the pause, eh?
I can't finish, sorry. Sorry, I thought she said it beeped.
All right, so, to continue. Democracy isn't perfect, it's loud, it's messy, and sometimes it's unfair. But it's also the most powerful thing we have, when good people refuse to stay silent. So tonight, I'm standing firm, not against anyone, but for everyone, for the people of Clifton, for the workers who make the city what it is, for the belief that when we choose to lead with integrity, compassion, and courage, we can build bridges and not tear down our community. So, with that, I love to just point out how, as the benefits were being taken away, again, not from council, that happened, that was two weeks ago, but from your colleagues, right? From the confidential employees, you had your councilwoman at the end smirk, happiness came into her face, that others are getting their benefits taken away. So, the fact of the matter here is, as the first minority elected on this governing body, the fact that many of you sit there and ask if I'm a homeowner, if I'm even married, if I'm probably on benefits, and, actually, matter of fact, and if I was, and if I was, it's unfortunate we don't have enough time. But to be continued, guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Domato.
In the play King Lear, a character says to the king, "Thinks thou that duty shall have dread to speak when power to flattery bows, to plainness honors bound when majesty falls to folly." Now, what that means is essentially that there's an ongoing conversation that takes place when people step up to that microphone. And as someone who has very recently not had this power, and in short order, won't have it anymore either, this is a stop on my life, as to do service to my community, I really cherish it and understand that when somebody comes up to that microphone and says something, and I'm going to speak first about the last gentleman who got up and mentioned me directly, and says two or three things that I find very offensive. You know, it's not appropriate for me to react in an emotional way, particularly to a resident. We bicker sometimes, but there's a power imbalance. I'm on the dais, you're on the floor, I have to treat you with respect and dignity, even if you say something that I find reprehensible. That said, though, I want to reference what Maria, the head of the Civil Rights Committee, said about the 2060-20 rule, which I actually quite like, because we're in a time where information is muddy, we're in an information war, people have a hard time connecting with conversations, because we have a hard time believing what's true, knowing what's true. How can you disagree about the use of a word when the very definitions of the word are in question when you get two different people in a conversation? So what I would say to that gentleman, and this is an open offer to any resident of this city, as long as I am in a position of power here, I am always willing to converse with you. If we can acknowledge that there is pain, and that your pain is real and it matters, my pain is real and it matters, we can start there. We're not going to agree on every definition of every word, we're not going to agree on how words work, but I can tell you this, I owe you the respect of speaking the truth to you as I see it, and not be compelled to say what you believe to be true. I owe you the respect of looking you in the eye and telling you what I think. And so, you don't like the words I choose, I'm sorry, but your pain is real, and if you want to talk about it, that offer is open anytime. There was an anti-Semitic flyer placed on the corkboard out in that hallway, a neo-Nazi organization that I will not name, because I don't want to give them publicity, posted a flyer on the corkboard, right outside the police station. This is a prominent neo-Nazi organization, they have a vast web presence and a lot of resources, and it's been reported to the police, and to anyone who wants to lurk in the shadows of Clifton, this is why free speech is actually a good thing. If you want to come in here and sneak up, first of all, most importantly, I want to know that no one in this building put that up. I would hope to God that's not the case. But if you want to sneak in here and put up anti-Semitic material, I challenge you to come right there, stand at that microphone, look me in the eye, and just be anti-Semitic, and then let's have that conversation. Don't lurk in the shadows like a snake, don't deface our materials with neo-Nazi propaganda. Get up here, look me in the eye, and say it to my face, and then let's have a chat out in the parking lot about it. To you, city manager, through the mayor, Third River Cleanup, how's it going? Third River Cleanup.
We are moving forward on it. I believe all the equipment is in place. We have Public Works detailed to the site, and the Public Works Director assures me that they're moving forward with the project.
Great, all right. And I also want to mention Gary Perino. You asked if I was in a movie. I actually am, and that's not, I'm not playing a gangster, but the reason I bring this up at a council meeting is actually because I owe the transparency of letting folks know this. My job is a little untraditional, I sometimes have to work nights, weekends, weird things, film shoots go long time. Thursday evening, I will be unable to attend the planning board meeting, and I take that extremely seriously, because I'm going to be working, and I hate it, I hate that I can't be there. And that's one of the things I have to consider when it comes time to decide if I'm going to run again next year, is that sometimes my job forces me to have to be late to these meetings or miss the meetings. There was a meeting earlier last year, I was shooting an Amazon show in Manhattan, and I was like, you know, on Zoom in the car, and, be that as it may, I won't be there Thursday, and, you know, I have a lot more, but we'll talk later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Domato. Councilman Gibson.
Hi, Ray, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Anyway, there's probably a lot of things I really have to say tonight, but I want to thank everybody who came to support me. I had hundreds of, between phone calls, text messages, emails, hundreds, hundreds. And I said to everybody, "I'm not going to say anything, I'm going to let the people speak." And tonight, the people spoke, and I have to say, I thank them very much for supporting me. I want to say thank you to all the recipients of their awards tonight. You know, I know, in fact, we have people from the Health Department that are really unbelievable. And the young lady who got the award tonight, we worked for the unhoused task force and cooperated with each other, and I just want to thank her for all that she does. Of course, Marie, you know, with the Avenue of Flags, Marie's at my house all the time, and I see how much work that she really does put in. So I just want to thank her and the people from the Avenue of Flags. This was a real eye-opener for me, but it's okay. I let things ride off my back, but nobody, nobody will fool my family, ever, ever. And to say I'm disappointed, to say the least, I am absolutely disappointed in what was said and who said it. But I think that's enough. I think that's enough that I really have to say about that. With Bart, you know, Bart, I said to my wife this week, I had just come out of the hospital this last week, and I was talking with somebody, and I said, "Let's go look at the park to see what Bart needs for the dog park. Let's see what we really need to do to get this done." And it just so happens that I was not able to get there, but I will, I'll get there, and I'll make my recommendations on it. I know a little bit about dog parks, and I know a little bit about what they really need to get done. There were some things that, some changes that we made tonight. The Triad Company, I happened to be on their Zoom the other day, and I thought that it was really a great meeting, our city manager, and our council, and the people that were there. It was really, really a good meeting, and we did talk about Nash Park, which, you know, I'm really excited about, and they're really, you know, moving forward with it. So I was really happy with Triad. That's pretty much what I have tonight, but I want to say thank you again, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Gibson. First of all, I'd like to thank the county for the $200,000 for the parks. You know, some people may think it's not enough, but to tell you the truth, it's a lot more than we've been getting in the past, they've been really helpful for us. I'd like to know, I'd like to help people, I'm one of the three votes that voted against taking the 10- to 20-year thing away from the workers, because I think they deserve it. You start here with thinking you're going to get something in the end, and all of a sudden, it's taken away. I mean, I'm not talking about myself and the council people, I'm talking about the regular workers that now aren't going to get where they want to get, because they're not going to have the 20 years in. So obviously, you know, I voted not to do that, but, and then just one last thing I want to say, because we really have a long agenda, is I see people all the time, and they say to me, "Why can't you control the meeting? Why can't you do this?" You know, this, what is this? This is, I'm not supposed to be dealing here with little children, you know, we're supposed to be civil, we're supposed to have integrity, we're supposed to be able to disagree without screaming, but you watch this on TV, people are screaming here, they're screaming there. What am I supposed to do? I'll break this if I hit this hard enough, and you see, I use it all the time, I use the gavel. But if they're screaming on one end and one end, and I'm standing up, and I'm saying, "Please, don't do this," where am I going here? I'm not like a guard or something, I'm not a teacher, a disciplinarian, we're adults. You know, we're supposed to have integrity, we're leaders, we're supposed to show the people that we could do this civilly. I shouldn't have to be, people shouldn't say, "Why don't you throw them out? This person's out of control, or they're screaming across the room, or this." You know, I'm not supposed to have to do it. First of all, I can't throw anyone out, but we should at least, you know, have some civility here. So when people say that to me all the time, "Use the gavel more, use the gavel," yeah, I use it if I have to, but if they're not going to calm down, what am I supposed to do? You know, I challenge anyone else to come up here, and when it gets chaotic like it does once in a while, let me, what are you supposed to do? There's nothing I can do. If they're not going to listen, they're going to act like a bunch of children, then that's ridiculous. We should be able to control ourselves, we should be able to argue, we should be able to disagree, but we should still show integrity, because we are the leaders of the city. We're the ones that the people are supposed to look up to. If they're seeing us acting like immature individuals, what does that show for us? It doesn't show anything. So, you know... So, you know, and I agree with Tony. We have to, you know, we have to do some healing here, and we have to learn that we cannot disrespect each other because that's what's happening. We're getting more problems arguing with each other, and we're getting city work done. You come to these meetings and all, it becomes personal, and it's personal. We should be working on city things, not personal things. So just for the people out there that, you know, always criticize this position up here, it's not as easy as you think, and if people aren't going to listen, there's nothing you can do. So, and we have a long night ahead of us, so I'm going to, and I'm there and say, Kathleen, let's.
Mayor, just a couple things.
Oh, I'm sorry, and we have a committee report.
I got a quick committee report, please.
No, no.
The ADA.
Yeah, no, we have committee reports.
So just, Mayor, before we get a committee report, Mayor to you, to the administration, can we get clarification? Tonight, change Chapter 99 confidential employees, correct? Upping the hours to 30 hours in 20 years, correct?
Yeah, you're talking about the ordinance?
Okay.
Yes.
And unions have separate contracts, and we were advised that those changes have to be negotiated through those contracts, correct?
That's correct.
So is the information being given tonight for the workers right now from the Mayor and Councilwoman Pino, correct? Because I also got calls and told employees that that wasn't correct.
Please clarify.
So what is, we changed Chapter 99 tonight, correct? Yes. For confidential officials and employees, correct?
Correct.
So as of now, with January 1st, starting this year, that's where it is. It's not please, fire, IBW, because according to the law, that's got to be negotiated through the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can we say it louder? I couldn't hear you.
Just lastly, I want, just lastly, I got calls from employees saying, they didn't want to tell me who, but whether it's from the administration or from personnel or from whoever, that they were told that if they weren't retired by January 1st, that they fell into the new rules. Is that information correct or not?
I don't know who gave you that information. I know when this was first discussed, a lot of employees expressed concerns. I met with employees myself, those that were covered by contracts. I assured them that they were protected from changes until their contract was renegotiated.
So to the employees, I want a list of names who gave you that information, because if it was maliciously done, there will be accountability.
Me too.
If it was incompetence, because for far too long, we didn't hire subject matter experts in this town, then that employee needs to be educated that that information that caused this chaos, and this is why we're running into these problems in this town, because of what we've dealt with for far too many decades that was happening. So if they were giving information incorrectly, it's one thing, but if it was maliciously done, it was another. So we're going to address this that caused all this chaos again unnecessarily.
Mayor, if I may?
So I just want to give the committee report, please?
No, well, I want to comment. Well, I'm sorry. What was he doing? What was he doing? Was he giving a committee report or was he asking something? Because that wasn't a committee report. Was that a committee?
I was asking for clarification.
Okay, so I want to follow up on that clarification, because, you know, I want to respect everyone's time. So to legal, to follow up on that clarification. Today, what happened today, right? We, second reading, well, not we, but the majority, the four of them, approved to take away health benefits from confidential employees. Yes or no?
There was, well, yes, there was health benefits from the.
Part-time health employees, and then the retirement benefits, the retirement healthcare benefits, to change it from 10 to 20. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Does that affect current employees that are under confidential? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Now, yes or no? Isn't that then also fair game when every single union is up for renegotiation? Is there anything that says that we can now turn around and go to the unions and say, "Well, we're asking our confidential's to serve 20 years, but you guys can stay at 10"? Isn't that, couldn't that be a negotiating chip for this council, especially since we set precedent and we didn't grandfather anyone in? Yes or no?
That's going to be up to the majority of the council.
Ah, the majority of the council. The majority of the council, so make sure you wink at them the right way and smile at them when you have to, because then there is nothing to prevent this council or future councils from using political retaliation to take that as a bargaining chip. True or false? Hasn't health benefits, and I can, please stop me if I can't say that, because in negotiations with the PBA, back when, when I first got on council, when we were negotiating then, weren't there lifetime health benefits put on the table, even though it didn't go anywhere because we went to arbitration? Yes or no?
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, we can fact-check. We can fact-check because that's a fact. So for this council, these individuals to say, "Don't worry, it's nothing to do with you. What you witnessed here is they're setting the stage," right? So this time next year, remember, all the unions who are coming up, and by the way, just so that we're clear, just be ready, because I don't know how much money we're going to have to be, have ready to negotiate, since we have all these lawsuits on the hopper, because my colleagues don't want to follow the process. So there's going to be lawsuits, even more that are already happening, and guess where that's coming from? Just want to point that out. So again, not yet, not yet. And if we rewind the tape, that's what Tony said, "Not yet." So let's just get ready. Thank you.
Mayor, before Tony gets, it has to be addressed. This is why this city couldn't move forward for 30 years. The fear mongering, the fear mongering. This is, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. And Tony, I agree with you. I'd like the names of what employees told you this was going to happen.
Rosemary Pino.
Because this could not, I sat here, I let you talk, but of course, you can't, you always have to interrupt. It's figure, it's fear mongering, fear mongering. What was changed today was for confidential employees, has nothing to do with the unions. Enough is enough with the fear monging. They say grandstanding? Ladies and gentlemen, that was your perfect example of grandstanding.
Mayor?
Yes.
Fun fact, to administration, confidential's don't have a union, correct?
Correct.
So usually, they follow based on whatever the unions get when it comes to benefits, typically, right? And the percentage that they get in raises. Is that fair to say?
They follow what the ordinance is detailed.
Right. So, and when it comes to raises, they follow based on what the other unions get. Is that fair to say?
There's a thing called first settlement that kind of sets the tone, but again, confidential's.
So to our council colleague, Tony Latona, you've heard him say it many, many times again, "Fair across the board, fair across the board," right? That's his favorite line, "We got to make it fair across the board." So if we've already set precedent as a city, that the negotiations tactics that we use for confidential employees, which by the way, we're not talking about council, these are your colleagues, this is Jason, you're head of DPW, this is John Beagle, the gentleman that was there today, getting praised for all the great work that the Health Department does. This is these guys, all right? This council has refused to give up a zero raise. Tell me how that's fair. Tell me. Not fair. So again, I plead with you to understand what's happening here. Today is not you, today is us. Tomorrow, it's you. And if you don't stand up for this craziness that's happening, where do you draw the line? So go ahead, let them gaslight us and tell us, never, never you. But that's what they also said. That's what they said to the courts. Didn't Gibson say, "I don't ever want to hurt the courts"? He was the final vote to put that on the court. There you go. Oh, by the way, there's people in the courts that not only will they be affected, but their family, their children.
Mayor, point of order.
Point of order. Sorry, I touched, did I touch on the nerve?
Point of order.
Sorry. I tend to do that a lot. You're welcome.
Point of order.
Tony, do you want to do your committee report?
I just want to do the committee report, the, God, this just never ends. The Disabilities Committee meeting that yesterday, I just wanted to point out again that thanking the administration, the closed caption added, and looking at adding to multiple languages. And also at the committee, just to remind everyone, on Monday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at City Hall, working this council with Assemblywoman Rosie Bagoli, that the state will be here for the unclaimed funds thing. So we've already asked the administration to have someone here from the city for the CHIP program, and that's for the residents to know to do upgrades on your home. Now it's up to $20,000. So if people who make a family of one under about $75,000, family of two, $85,000, family of three, $98,000 or so, you will qualify for up to $20,000 to do improvements to the outside of your home. So we're going to have a representative here from the city to look over that. Councilman Koloje brought up the Stay New Jersey Anchor Program is, October 31st is the deadline. If you are a renter, you qualify for up to $500. So if you haven't claimed that as a renter, you qualify for that. As a homeowner, up to $1,750. If you haven't claimed that or received that yet, you qualify. So please stop by City Hall on the 27th in the afternoon. I already, the city has money owed, the Board of Ed has money owed. I already actually spoke to a representative from the Boys Club, and they had $4,000 outstanding that they claimed. We have booster clubs. If people moved, if they changed their email, if they got a new job, if they were gifted in money, if they had money in escrow, if they were willed money, there's literally hundreds of millions of dollars there. So that's being set up to come down. So yes, I'm going to ask for the city administration to allow city employees to come down here during the duty day and claim any unclaimed funds. We have the Senior Center, we have the Adult Opportunity Center, all of these groups, please use that time to come down here and claim that or look. Did we get a representative from PSENG to also come? Mayor to the administration?
Yes.
We spoke last meeting about having someone from PSENG also be here for any residents to try to claim money, grant money that they can qualify for to help them with their electricity bills. I'll take that as a no.
I had the contact. I didn't know if Jason was available for that date, but I will check it again.
Okay, so you can see on Monday afternoon for that also, it's from 2:00 to 4:00 on Monday that they will all be here to help get that money back to our employees. And just lastly, Mayor, just, I don't want to beat a dead horse, just lastly, we did not look to take away any medical benefits from part-time employees. We just looked to up the hours. If we followed the state medical benefits plan, it's 35 hours. We literally compromised, in my opinion, it went to 30 hours for the employees that work in 25. So for the record, that is not the case. We just looked to up the hours to get it closer to equal. So we were told employees, part-timers, were working more than 30 hours, so we just looked to move that baseline up. So if they're working 30 hours, they will continue to receive those benefits. That's all I have, Mayor.
Let's, we don't have a lot of time, so let's get the resolutions done, and then we'll go to confidential's, because, Tom, there's some confidential's we have to get through, right, Tony?
Yes, Mayor, we stopped, according to my notes.
Yeah, so I'm saying, let's do the resolutions, get them done this way. If we were stuck, the resolution should take five minutes.
Kathleen, you're going to tell us ones that weren't done, correct?
Correct. We only really have like three that weren't done.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't think there are many.
So Resolution 50825 for the claims list.
Right.
525-25, we actually didn't even discuss yet, because that's going to be discussed in confidential.
525, the developer agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, that's really it.
Yeah, I think that's it, too.
Two were tabled, so. Yeah, 514 was tabled and 520.
And I think our 2725 needs a separate roll call.
527. I circled that one, too.
Is that right, Joe?
My vote was recorded in the works session.
It was recorded.
Yeah, I recorded it in the work session. He said no.
It was recorded as a no, and so.
Yeah, that was recorded. We don't have to do that one again.
All right, so can we get a roll on?
So all we have to do is the claims list.
Claims list for now.
So move 508.
Second. Roll call.
The claims list.
Claims list.
Any objections?
I'm going to abstain. I didn't get a chance to review the bills today, so I'm abstaining on that.
And even though developer agreement, does anybody have any discussion that they need to talk about in executive session?
I think, I have to see if this is the property that we spoke about, so I would like to hold that off.
Okay, then we'll hold that.
Okay.
Hey, truth.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I would still like a separate roll call on 527.
We did that already.
No, he just objected. I didn't do anything. I was waiting for the resolutions to vote, so.
You voted. You voted.
I did not. I didn't do anything.
What did you say?
It's not going to take that long to, I make the motion for 52725.
What number are we on?
Second.
Wait, I don't, can't hear a word Joe said, because he's not talking.
We're going to vote out in public, like we're supposed to do according to the Public Mean Act, that's all.
What are the numbers again?
We did vote.
All right, so 527-25. Did we have a first and a second?
I'll move it. Which one are we moving again, please? 527 for the second time.
527, okay. Marsh McClellan. Can I have a second?
Somebody needs to second.
Second.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson? He's still on? He's muted.
He's muted. You're muted, Bill.
Councilman Gibson?
Still muted, Council. Give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
We're re.
Okay, give him a second.
I think he's trying to unmute.
There you go. Oh, you had it. Do it again.
Hit it again.
You unmuted yourself, and then you muted again. There you go.
So.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
My dogs are barking in the back.
That's okay.
All right, anyway, yes, is my.
Vote, okay. Councilman Koloje?
No.
Councilman Latona?
I'm not going to lie, this was a really tough, tough one for me, but I'm voting yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Pino?
No regard. We just had one of the union leaders from the DPWs ask this council to please reconsider because they have worked with this broker, they know the families, they know the city, we're going through some serious hardships, and we're still going down this route?
Okay.
My vote is no.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
No.
Four yes, three no. Resolution passed.
No, there is no group to move. We did everything else. The only thing we have is left is one from executive session, the developers' agreement.
Okay, so we still got, going back to discussion items?
Yeah, we're going back to discussion. We were on discussion two.
Tom, how important are the confidential's to get done tonight?
It's only 5:30.
I know, I just want to ask how much is important.
We still have time.
I know we do, but I'm just saying.
Well, if we start now with the discussion items, we.
No, I'm ready to go for discussion. I'm just saying, if it gets closer to 11:30, we want to know how important is it?
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
All right, what number are we on discussion?[1733.71] I think we're on D3.
I thought somebody else had something to say on D2.
No, we got past that.
We got past that, we're in D3.
Well, discussion item three, I like this idea of charging, well, let's wait, we, what the ordinance, what you're looking to do with the parade ordinance is based a fee based on the number of intersections that have to be closed and the amount of personnel it takes to navigate and allow a parade to go through.
That's correct. After meeting with the police department, they thought that that was a better measurement than setting forth like, you know, if the parade is a half mile long or a mile long or a mile and a half long. You know, because they really, you know, made the case that it comes down to the number of intersections and the length of time that those intersections have to be manned and closed. So we're putting together an ordinance based upon that criteria. One of the Third Circuit decisions that dealt with this, you know, they specifically said one of the ways a municipality can pass an ordinance that would pass constitutional mustard is by setting up a fee schedule that has, is in place and determined before the event takes place and it applies equally to all.
Okay, where we have, as we saw today, we tabled a parade for next year. My hope is to get something in place as soon as possible so that we can approve things for next year. I don't think this council, and I'm glad that we did table that, because we need to have something in place. So do you think by the next?
Yes, we will have, we will have an ordinance on.
For a first reading?
Based upon the criteria that's covered in this.
And so, I just have one question. Is there any way to differentiate like for-profit and a not-for-profit?
We looked at, we looked at that and essentially every organization that have made an application through the clerk's office is some type of nonprofit. There's not any for-profit entities that we know that have been conducting parades in the city. You know, of course, any city sanctioned event is going to be excluded from this. We're not going to charge ourselves to run a parade like the Veterans Parade that's coming up in a couple of weeks. But yeah, that's where we, you know, we're going to have to, again, we're meeting with the police department and the DPW this week, you know, to further clarify. You know, they mentioned a couple of the other organizations that run parades. You know, they mentioned, you know, just even the routes create some greater difficulties for them, so, you know, perhaps we can go to those organizations and rerun the routes and could, you know, save money and not cost the organizations that much.
Mayor, through you to Digo?
No, she can go. I had one more question.
Thank you. Tom, you said something that just caught my attention. You said that most of the organizations that look to do a parade are nonprofits. And you said that obviously we wouldn't charge ourselves as a city if it's one of our events like, I would say, recreation, we're doing the Halloween Parade, right? That's, we got to close the street. But then you also said, you didn't use that as an example, you used the Veterans Parade. And by no means am I.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said.
You didn't use recreation as one of your examples of city events, you used the Veterans Parade. So I guess my question is, because the veterans, they're also a nonprofit, right? And they also do all the logistics, like every other nonprofit, with the exception obviously that the city, as the city should, celebrate and support all other parades. So what makes the Veterans Parade any different than any other parade? Because you used it, it's city sanctioned. Like, how do you become a city sanctioned parade?
It's run by the city.
The Veterans Parade is ran by the city, it's not ran by the nonprofit?
It's not run by, it's run by the city.
So we put out all the money, we do all that?
We do all that.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification, because I was just curious, how do you then hop over as a nonprofit to no longer incur that cost? But, so it has to be ran by the city?
It's ran by the city. As, you know, you mentioned the rec department, they run some events, the Halloween event, you know.
So what department runs the Veterans Parade?
It's rec department, I think.
No, I just, I want to know, can you clarify?
I think he's correct that it's run through.
The Veterans Department, I mean, I'm sorry, the Recreation Department?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm interested to see that.
I'll find out for sure.
Because when we do the Labor Day Food Truck Festival, it's by the rec department raising funds for the.
For the parade committee.
For the parade, right?
Right. And those monies that we, they raise, they go into the city, the city, those are not held by any outside committee, those are city funds, they're in the budget, and then we pay for the cost of the parade from that line item in the budget.
I think that's great. I'm interested to know how other nonprofits or organizations can partner up with the city and if the city needs to have a special account to have their funds put there with their fundraising efforts, that's fine, I think that's great. So I'm interested to learn more about how that process works. Thank you.
Okay, I think Councilman Latona had a second question.
I forget what he, that's fine, thank you. All right, so. Well, I have a couple of questions too, Mayor, on this. So obviously, like you said, Mr. Egan, we can exempt the city, we can exempt the city from having to pay the fees. And it sounded to me, based on your explanation, that it, where the money may be going determines whether or not it's a city event or a, or an outside organization event, right? Veterans Parade as an example, you know, that fundraising is coming into a trust fund for us to then utilize, and so the funds that are sitting in there would not be used for police traffic control, right? Because we can then use it for other things that would be needed for the parade, correct? Because we can exempt ourselves from having to pay the fees. Yes?
Yes.
So then I guess the question becomes, because, you know, I'm looking at Mr. Odo's memo here, and I'm going to have a real hard time trying to support charging St. Cyril's, which is a very small parish in our town, you know, fees to do traffic control for a tiny church that probably can't really afford it. And it really rubs me the wrong way that we're looking at Little Leagues and a Little League Parade is now going to have to pay money. So instead of allowing our kids to, you know, celebrate opening day of baseball, you know, they're going to need to fundraise money that's not going to go to bases or balls or, you know, travel teams or whatever. They're going to have to actually continue to raise money in order to hold a parade for the kids, which have been longstanding traditions that are to Little Leagues that are still remaining. So the question becomes, would we be able to say the Little League Parade is a city-run
I don't believe so, not as it's currently set up. I mean, it doesn't meet the criteria where we are collecting the money, we're holding the money, we're organizing the event, we're, you know, getting the bands and other groups that participate in the Veterans Day Parade, you know, the city is doing all that stuff. You know, we're, and that's where, you know, we had concern and that's why Andy, perhaps you can weigh in on it, that's why it was mentioned in a letter. Because anything we come up with, we have to uniformly apply and it has to be applied objectively. It can't be based upon what the group is for or, you know, I mean, whether it's a Little League or a religious institution or, you know, some type of political function that wants to run a parade in town, you know, we can't have that criteria judged on what the purpose of the parade is going to be for. So that is something that, you know, Andy can perhaps speak more of on this, but that was something like trying to strike that balance, you know, so that we don't, you know, limit Little Leagues, religious institutions from doing things that they have been doing for years, but still, you know, receive the compensation for, you know, the bigger parades, which, you know, they consume a lot of our resources, police time and, you know, inconvenience of road closures and everything else. Andy, you want to, want to add anything to that?
Tom, pretty much said it all there. That's the bottom line is, in order to be compliant with the law, our ordinance has to be objective and uniform.
So yes, I can respect that. And I think what I would suggest, since you're going to be bringing this back to us again, is that all of these Little League organizations, whether it be soccer, whether it be basketball, whether it be baseball, these are all, you know, volunteer organizations. These are all, you know, parents that are volunteering their time, you know, to provide kids with an experience and some camaraderie and learn some lessons and, you know, maybe even learn how to play a sport while you're doing it as well. And I know from our budget perspective that essentially we have outsourced these functions from recreation to these volunteer organizations. We give, we even give them seed money, you know, so that they can get started with ordering the uniforms and everything else while they're still waiting for everyone to send in their registration fees to pay. And so I would, I would suggest that we take a look at those arrangements and if it turns out that we are outsourcing baseball to Little Leagues, would that be considered a city event that we would then be able to exempt so that the kids could still have a parade? So if you guys can just take a little closer look at that, I think that we might be able to find a balance where we're not hurting the children in town or punishing volunteers.
Yeah, so Mayor, I just got one question on that. That was exactly my point, maybe I asked the question wrong. My question, what I meant to ask before was, can we have a different set of rules in the sense of, not a different set of rules, but differentiate, there's a difference between, say, Little League that's not, and I don't want to pick on, say, the Roadrunners, right? They run the race through Clifton. They charge people and they're bringing in money to run that race. If you're running a parade or event, you're charging people, you're bringing in vendors, so you're bringing in money. So for me, there's a difference between that and a church who's not running a carnival or parade or whatever, that they're doing an event with no money coming in, they're not charging anyone. So that was my question of having that as one way than an organization bringing in money. So that is the difference for me. Yes, Little League isn't setting up vendor tables, so they're not bringing in money having that, you know, parade. So that was the difference for me of finding that balance of the two.
Mayor, if I may, to my colleague, Tony, I'm having a hard time following you because you're saying that now you're determining the difference, you're, you know, one set of rules, but not really, because that's what I'm hearing now. You're determining if we're going to charge, it depends on if they're generating revenue for the parade. Well, and you said tables, well, last time I attended a parade, there's no tables, right? It's floats that go and people come together and celebrate whatever the parade is about. So I'm going to need you to give me at least a little bit more clarity as what that vision is, because to my understanding, all parades go through and they don't have tables that they're charging. Now, if a parade is choosing to end at a certain space, like we saw the Peruvian Parade this year, starting in Passaic, ending in Clifton, and then they use the parks, well, that's different, that's no longer, that was their parade, period, and then they had a community event at the park of which they paid their fee to rent the park and so on and so forth. So I guess my question to you is, if that's your determination, if you're going to charge or not because they're making money, well, then based on tables on the parade route, is that how we're determining how, who we're charging? I just need some clarity, because I can understand us wanting to protect our Little Leagues and the churches and, you know, some nonprofits, but to use your words, right? It's equal and fair for everyone across the board, it's equal and fair. So I'm interested to see what caveats you come up with creatively to selectively enforce certain fees on some organizations and on some, we can understand why we're going to skip them. So I'm curious, I'm interested to hear more on this conversation.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question to Legal and Gary. The Little League Parades are for the baseball season, which is run by the Little Leagues in conjunction with the Recreation Department.
Yeah, we would have to get the particulars. I'm not familiar exactly how the role the Recreation Department plays in running the leagues. If it's, if it's something like Councilman Kolojay said that, you know, basically the city used to be, you know, in charge of running the leagues and we've kind of outsourced that to volunteers and parents over the years.
But the baseball program is still part of the rec.
We would, we may have to get back to that.
So we need to hold that money. If it's ours, we need to hold the money. We can't have another entity hold the money and say it's ours. You can't have both ways. So either we're going to have a trust for those leagues.
Again, I need to get the details. I don't know to what degree rec department's still involved in running these leagues. We got to, we got to find that out. I know we subsidize the leagues, the leagues get money from the city each year, but it's not enough for the league to survive. There is still fundraising that each of the leagues do and, you know, they rely heavily on volunteers. So we're going to, if we're going to do this, we have to strike that type of balance. But I don't have the information. I will get the information on how the league is run and if we have to adjust how the leagues are run to accommodate them for parades and such like that, then, you know, the council will have to decide if they're on board with doing it that way.
And throw that to the churches as well, because we just approved one, I believe, right? Because they're doing a procession, so that requires police shutdown. So we're also talking about the churches, all these nonprofits.
Right, but, but, you know, the thing that we have to keep in mind here, as we start trying to break this down and parse out one group over another group.
Yeah.
That's where the constitutionality issues are going to come in.
Right, yeah.
This is supposed to be something that's uniformed and objective and does not involve the discretion of any municipal employee under the court decisions to be legal.
Thank you.
Let's all remember that. Thank you.
So just to clarify to the administration, what I'm talking about is, I go to St. Philip's, I know St. George is across the street, they hold events. I know the Polish community does the event at Masonic Temple. My difference is, when they have those events, the road needs to be closed, they pay for those police officers.
Those are not parades.
Because the road is being closed.
But they're not parades.
Thank you.
We're talking about.
So my point is, there's a difference between events making money or vendors or sales and closing roads, or there's a difference for me of a road being closed for not bringing money, whether it's Little League or a church or whatever. That is the difference for me in my understanding of it. And again, those, I know St. Philip's does, I know St. George does, I know the Polish community, they pay for those police officers that have to go block and control traffic in the road. So we're already doing that and we need to do that. And that's the difference for me. I don't think the church procession who's not, has vendors making money doing that should be paying, or Little League, they don't have vendors and all of that stuff. So for me, that is the difference.
So I'm sorry.
We've got a lot going on tonight.
I need some, I need some clarification, excuse me. Mayor, Councilman Latona just mentioned the Polish Parade, right? So I'm.
It's not St. John's Cathedral, Tony.
Yeah, I'm.
No, no, I wasn't even talking about that one.
No, but.
I meant you said the Polish.
Yeah, and I.
I was talking about the Polish festival they do at the Masonic Temple.
Oh, you're talking about that, I'm sorry, those are not parades.
I thought it was.
Those are not parades, Tony. I think what we have on top, in front of us is parades. I'm sorry, am I too close to the mic? I'm sorry. What I think what we have enough in front of us are parades, so I think you're mixing the two or you're purposely trying to confuse the two. So let's stay focused. So you're talking about the Masonic Temple, that's an event that happens in a private property at the Masonic Temple, right? Not what we're talking about. So yeah, calm down, because I think you need to slow down, hon, and figure out what you're saying. This is parades we're talking about, let's not get it confused, okay? Thank you.
Joe, you want to, or you even know we're going to move on?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. And I just, I just want to kind of steer us back to where we were. Again, my suggestion would be to explore if it is an outsourcing situation and if it would be legal or constitutional for us to say it is a city event, because we're essentially outsourcing the function of baseball or basketball or soccer or football to this group of volunteers, because it is a fundraiser for them. These parades have banners, each team is carrying their sponsored banner, and however much JK Realty had to play to sponsor a team, is now getting paraded down a street. So it is, you know, that parade function is a fundraiser for the organization and I would just hate to see, you know, our youth wind up getting into the crosshairs of, you know, we need to make money and we're going to make it off the backs of children. I also have concerns about St. Peter's Haven tonight, which was tabled, right? This is, this is an organization, it's our largest food bank in the city, and we're now going to take some of the money that they make to be able to buy food to feed people who can't afford to buy food in Clifton, and we're going to say, you got to give some of that to us to cover, you know, traffic control. And so, listen, I know it's a Herculean task for you guys to try and find this balance that says we're constitutional, but we're now not going to punish, you know, volunteer organizations or organizations that are actually providing a service to the people of Clifton. So good luck.
Four, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the censorship.
I'll second that.
And it was, we had asked last time, Chris, I believe we both did it, that it was supposed to be on for an ordinance, but if it has to be next meeting, that's fine.
Well, we'll have a discussion first, Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Well, because there were some misstatements that were made earlier this, this evening about the ethics complaint. So let's first, you know, get that fact straight. And, and the language for anyone who's kind of familiar with how the local finance board works, they basically declined to hear the, the complaint. And they based it on the three reasons that the complaint was, was initially placed in. And, and those were using an official position for personal gain, or using an official position for monetary or, or material gain, or, or using your official position for financial gain. And so they basically said, based on the documents or the supporting documents that were sent to them, there, there's no clear line that says there was financial gain that was involved here. And so for that reason, they said, we're not going to investigate this matter any further, we're closing the matter. So, so the idea that they somehow said that we weren't entitled to hold an investigation is, is not accurate to, to what the description is that came from the local finance board. And I think that what's sort of important to that function, and maybe a sad commentary on our community, is that the local finance board essentially said, yeah, politicians lie. If they're not lying to line their pockets, then it's not unethical. Is essentially the, the ruling that the, that the Ethics Board had provided to us. But reading the, and, and looking at their report, they didn't dispute the fact that the, the comments that were made were not accurate. In fact, that they make mention of the fact that in the report that, you know, it's just, it may be disputed in terms of the, the, what was said, and the investigation may have determined that, you know, is factually inaccurate. And certainly the, the investigation had found that the, the statements were inaccurate and that they were intentionally or knowingly inaccurate based on the, based on the investigation that was performed. And, you know, perhaps if, if the councilwoman had participated, and I totally respect, you know, her ability to, to invoke her Fifth Amendment right, and juries are always instructed that a Fifth Amendment doesn't say, you know, that there's a presumption of, of guilt. That's not the case. And, and so I think that if there was evidence that was to the contrary, that would support the fact that this wasn't intentional, you know, we would participate in, in that investigation. But the conclusion they came from, what was from the, from the internal investigation by the, the city, was that the statements were inaccurate and that the statements were also, you know, based on actually knowing the facts. And the censure that we're looking at here is, is also based on, not the ethics complaint, actually that was one of the, the therefores, let's go ahead and move forward with an ethics complaint on top of that. But it was based on the recommendations of the finding from that investigation and not the ethics complaint itself. So to me, you know, removing a, a censure, which, let's face it, a censure is pretty much a meaningless act anyway, so I'm kind of shocked that we're talking about something that happened four years ago, you know, given all the things that we have facing us moving forward. But that being said, I certainly wouldn't support a motion to rescind something that, one, I wasn't privy to, and based on what I was able to see that was provided to me, you know, the censure was, was, you know, a legitimate act that occurred. And, and so I think that it is important to make sure that we don't conflate the two and say that somehow the local finance board proved me innocent because it didn't. The local finance board strictly said, in order for it to be an ethics violation, there had to be some sort of monetary or material element to this, and we don't see enough documentation or evidence to say that there was some sort of money that changed hands. And so that's why they refused to open an investigation. So they didn't really find against the investigation that the city did. What they found was that the city's ethics complaint was not supported by the documents that they submitted in. But the censure resolution's not based on the ethics complaint, the censure resolution is based on the internal investigation. And the internal investigation was pretty darn clear with, there was information and we knowingly know that, that it, you know, was purposely disseminated. So with that being said, we can vote on this, but I, I'm certainly going to be a no vote because I'm not going to undo what a previous council thought was an appropriate action to take.
It's ironic you say that, Joe, because we have a case right now where confidential information by two department heads was, with HIPAA information was sent out to a reporter and those employees also emailed it to themselves, and you've been no help in wanting to do an investigation to find out if one of those employees was the leak of the source. So it's, it's pretty, and just for a reminder, I don't know what report you read, but while we wait for it, the line in the report actually said something to the effect of, there was no merit for the case and there never should even have been an investigation. It literally says, so I'm waiting for the report to be found, but the line literally says from them that there never even should have been an investigation approved. So again, just imagine, as we're waiting for the report for the public, you and your spouse are getting divorced. This is the best analogy I can give to this. You and your spouse are getting divorced and your spouse gets to make accusations against you, right? And then your spouse gets to hire the judge, the jury, and the investigator. Can anyone tell me with 100% accuracy why every report that the good old boys and career politicians and administration and bureaucrats, every report that they sent out to someone who wanted to either change things in City Hall or question things, 100% accuracy, that report came back finding them guilty. But no one got put under oath. They got to say whatever they wanted, no accountability. So once we find the report, we're going to read this line that confirms what I'm just saying because it's, it's pretty astonishing that my colleague literally just said word salad and a whole bunch of things that is so blatantly out in like left field in Pluto that I don't even know how you can actually make that statement, reading that line from that report that directly said that the investigator, that never should have happened. So we'll, we'll wait for that letter, but let's move on because we do have important things.
We don't, we don't need to move on. So, so first, Mayor, if I may, thank you. So first, those individuals were investigated.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we heard from, actually, they were investigated twice and, and we heard about it both times in closed session. So to say that there wasn't an investigation on these individuals is just not an accurate statement because I know you were in closed session with me as well. I can read the paragraph for you and it says, "Following a preliminary investigation, a thorough review of the documents submitted and an evaluation of the facts and circumstances relevant to the complaint, and upon consideration of the foregoing provisions of the local government ethics law, the board voted to dismiss the charge that there was monetary gain," and it, it gives the NJSA 40A colon nine dash twenty-two dash five or point five C, F, and A, which all speak to material or monetary gain. "There's no allegation," they voted to dismiss the allegations for monetary gain for lack of reasonable factual basis. "The board determined that the law does not prohibit council members from expressing personal opinions that they feel benefit the public's interest regardless of whether those opinions are disputable. An airing policy agreement's out publicly is a power held by the council members. As such, there was no reasonable factual basis to authorize an investigation by the local finance board into the allegation." It's not saying that the investigation should have never occurred, it is saying in this document that they opted to not do a full investigation based on that. "They additionally said that the board dismissed the Open Public Meetings Act allegations because they lack jurisdiction." An allegation of a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act in and of itself does not trigger an ethics violation. So the fact that we had an investigation for two employees over Open Public Meetings Act and the fact that we had an internal investigation also for Open Public Meetings Act in this particular case, the, the local finance board is not saying that that wasn't warranted, it was saying that they don't have jurisdiction over Open Public Meetings Act, and they're also saying that they don't have any kind of documentation that would say there was a monetary or material gain for this. And so it's important that, you know, we don't accidentally mislead the public. Now, if you want to pull a censure, which is basically meaningless because it's ego-driven out of, out of my guess, you know, then, then we'll hold that vote. But I, I'm explaining the reasons why I'm not going to support that because, one, I wasn't here in 2021, and, two, the investigation that I read clearly demonstrated that, yes, information from closed session leaked out to the public and that this is the person who leaked it out.
Mayor, may I say something here? Respectfully, Joe, I hear what you're saying. You know, we, a lot of people up here say things that we can disagree with, are true, not true, you know. But for me, if it's, if it's useless to rescind a censure, that also means it's useless to give one. And so if it's really not that, if it's more symbolic, you know, my interest right now is to just try to limit the acrimony and the air iter to the extent that that's possible. And, you know, I, I, I think that, I think that this is just something we can do and, and, and move on. I, I...
And, and, and to my colleague, to him, it's a waste of time because he's part of the real cabul and he hasn't been the one who's been falsely attacked like some of us have for a very long time for going up against the good old boys in the old guard club. So for him, it's meaningless because he's been on the side of doing all this malfeasance over the years and not on the side of being on the other end of it. So I, I'll let the line be read now into the statement for, to read the report. And if my colleague's going to read it, we got important things, but go ahead. Read the most...
"As such, there was no reasonable factual basis to authorize an investigation into this allegation."
By the local finance board.
That's who you filed it with. You didn't file it with Santa Claus.
No, it's the State Department of Community Affairs, Local Government Ethics Law.
Who, who you filed it with?
So that's okay.
And, and we can have the conversation about who the judge and the investigator
and the lawyers pick, Mr. Carmen Gola, Judge DeLuca, the same people, they're all be at, at, what is it, on Valley Road? I'm sorry. The Valley Regency? Come December, they're all be all together at the Christmas party, all together. And yep, like I said, the administration got to pick the judge, the jury, and investigator, and you want to talk about a conflict. And as soon as something gets out of their hands and goes to where they filed it, with someone independent? Read that line again. I'm sorry, we just need to hear it one, once again. This is who the administration sent the complaint to.
"As such, there was no reasonable factual basis to authorize an investigation into the allegation."
Even authorized, yep.
Which, which cost, what, $10,000? It was close to $10,000, the bill from the judge.
And how much was it for Mr. Carmen Gola?
Well, I didn't add those figures up because he hid them in different bills, so you have to kind of pull them apart.
Mayor, if you want to get that on for...
Well, we can say with the veterans lawsuit, his bill's up to 750,000 hours.
We're going to have to go to confidential.
Well, no, there's a motion and a...
There's a motion in a second.
Mayor, if I may, because, one, it is not meaningless. The censure was based on the investigation that was conducted here, not on the ethics complaint. The resolution for the censure also included sending an ethics complaint, which I probably would have disagreed with if I was on the council at the time because I don't see any monetary gain, just the same way that, that the local finance board didn't see any monetary gain. But the point is that the censure was done because a public official came out here and knowingly lied to the public. And I can't, you want to vote for this, you can. You want to vote to rescind the fact that someone, some previous council said lying to the public is not a good thing because the Ethics Board is not...
Okay, maybe they were misled.
Joe, I, I...
They were misled, Joe.
May I respond to that, Mayor? When Joe's done, I don't want to interrupt Joe.
Tony's interrupted me.
Look, you know, I, I, I do want to move on to confidential here, but, you know, these, these investigations and, 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 you know, if we really wanted to get nuts up here, I mean, every meeting, we could have something that somebody else said that we can say is, is a falsehood or twisted or has spin. I, I'm not even necessarily getting into the, the direct content of this. The spirit of it for me is, is, you know, when, when you condemn somebody publicly for something and then, you know, a moment comes back later on of, of, of some level of vindication, I, I think it's fair to just say, hey, let's move on.
Did you just read these documents, right?
Yeah, and I read the letter. I read the letter that the, the Ethics Board sent.
Okay, so...
Roll the question.
You want to have it, so you want to, you're asking, most things to put it on for the next...
Table, let's see who votes for it and who doesn't. Says a lot.
For next meeting.
Going to get out to put it on for next meeting. Right. Okay, so we'll take a roll call.
There's two people who voted already to put it on for the next meeting.
We're not voting to rescind it now, it's just on for the next meeting.
Right.
Right.
So now we need to vote on that.
No, we don't have to vote on it. We didn't vote on something that we just put on to the agenda.
It's not a resolution.
It takes two people. It takes two people to do it.
Right. No, you're right, you're right, okay. You're good.
Well, then why is he saying that we have to have a roll call?
No, 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 you're fine. Right, so Tom, we got to go to confidential because we got to... So what's the, what's the important ones? Oh, you have to, Kathleen, you have to read the... Yeah, we're going to the closed session.
So then, everything needs to get moved to next meeting. That's either council mail or discussion items we didn't get to, unless we're going to vote to have a special meeting next week and get caught up.
Vote for a special meeting?
Let's see what happens tonight. Let's, let's, let's take care of business tonight. So I'll make a motion to go back in the closed.
Second.
Thank you. I guess we should do roll call coming out of closed.
Councilman Demato.
Left the meeting in closed session.
Councilman Gibson.
Left the meeting in closed session.
Councilman Kolojay.
Present.
Councilman Latona.
Left the meeting in closed session.
Councilwoman Pino.
Here.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Left the meeting in closed session.
Mayor Gabowski.
Here.
So Mayor, since we still have about 10 minutes left, if we can just do council mail, I have a couple items. Council mail number three is our chief financial officer had a response to the forensic audit on the Chapter 78 recommendation. The forensic auditors provided us with their methodology for how they came up with saying that somehow the taxpayers lost $213,000 on a miscalculation. And it was a little disappointing to, to read the memo because basically the auditor said that they only checked two pay cycles, the two August pay cycles, and a forensic audit is supposed to touch every document. So why they didn't go through the entire Chapter 78 contributions from January through December is, is a little puzzling to me. But ultimately, we spent $150,000 and, and didn't get what we had paid for. But based on what they provided to the CFO, he was able to ascertain that they had made a miscalculation with the $213,000 and that it turns out that they were using the incorrect table. And so their math came out to say that somehow the taxpayers had to pay an extra $213,000 because employees didn't contribute their full Chapter 78 contributions. And so that has been refuted at this point based on that memo. And so, you know, to be clear to the public, there was no lost money and the Chapter 78 contribution was not miscalculated by the city. It actually turned out to be miscalculated. miscalculated by the forensic auditors. And I think it's important that we share that information with the public, so that they're not misled, either accidentally or deliberately. And then the other council mail item that I have, Mayor, is council mail number six. The chief financial officer provided us with the printout of the gasoline and diesel purchase pricing. And I took a look at those numbers, and just based on taking a couple random samples of February and July on the gasoline costs, and factoring out that we're not paying taxes wholesale, and if we wound up getting fuel cards like the state troopers do, we would be able to back out the tax as well. But the truth is, based on these numbers, to date, it would cost us an additional $82,000 a year to not buy wholesale and fuel ourselves, but instead get fuel cards for the vehicle. So, you know, extrapolate that out over 10 years, and that's $820,000, which would more than cover the replacement of the fueling station here at the police station. I've said on multiple occasions that, you know, we really should be looking at trying to run the city more like a business. And so I know the example was the state troopers use fuel cards, but the state troopers are government. And I would ask the public, remind me of the last time you saw a FedEx truck, or a UPS truck, or an Amazon truck at your local gas station fueling up to make deliveries, because they all do the same thing as well. They know it saves money. Now, listen, these are million-dollar, billion-dollar organizations, right? So compared to our $135 million budget, we're nothing. And so maybe, you know, saving $82,000 a year for us may seem like a bad idea, but to them, it's 82,000 times, you know, 100, based on where they're going. So I think it just needed to be clear, based on that, that we should probably model ourselves more after the private sector and the people who actually use fuel on a very extensive basis, like FedEx and UPS and Amazon, and not model ourselves after the state troopers and the state government in terms of utilizing fuel cards. And I just wanted to make those two points based on what we're looking at here. I guess in council mail seven, we got a list of city-owned properties, and that's appreciated. Would it be possible for administration to review these properties and sort of make a recommendation to us? Because, you know, if one of these properties is, let's say, a 25-foot by 100-foot piece of property, yeah, we own it, but no one's going to buy it because they can't build on it. And I would also, if we could take a look at what inventory we may be interested in putting up, what would the rules be for that? My understanding is that when the city goes to sell its contiguous properties, that all put in a bid for that property, and then we make a determination as to who can purchase that property based on those bids. So I would like to know if there is a minimum bid that's required, or if we can make that as a condition, because, yes, we should be getting dead inventory certainly off of our rolls and get them back to paying taxes, there's no question about it. But if these are situations where we're going to sell a piece of property that has an easement, and it's an unbuildable lot, so no one's going to be interested in buying it, because there's only five feet of developable land on a 37-and-a-half-foot lot or something, I think it would be helpful if we actually went through these lists to determine which may be sellable and which probably aren't. Because the truth is, if we acquired most of these through tax sales, that's because the private sector knew those properties are worthless, and that's how we got stuck with them. And so I don't necessarily think that if we got stuck with a property that has environmental issues and is going to require cleanup, is going to be something that we're actually going to be able to put up for bid and realize money. So, if we can take a look at, because it's a pretty big list, so if we can take a look at that list and kind of make a determination of, yeah, here are 50 properties the city owns, but legit, here's five properties that we can probably put up, I think that would be helpful for a future discussion.
Councilman Koloje, Mayor, to you, to Councilman Koloje. Councilman, I recall vaguely in the past when we, I believe it was at the last, the last term, I can't recall, it was this one or the last one, but we were exploring to see properties for a new firehouse, if you remember. And I know that one of the properties that had come up in discussion was the property over by the library, that opened, that open space. And I know that, I kind of recall administration at that time saying that in order for us to get approved to build there, we have to exchange out some other properties, right? And these properties that you're referring to were some of those properties that council, if I recall correctly, was looking to put together to be able to do an even exchange, so that we can actually build on this land. Because like, to your point, right, we have a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit everywhere, and really, no one can have any use for that, ourselves, the city, or we can really sell it off. So I'm just curious to get your thoughts on that, and if that's something that we should maybe consider, looking into a bigger property that we can be able to build on and just exchange it for these properties based on the guidelines that's required for open space. What are your thoughts?
So, I'm opposed to using any kind of open space or parkland for a firehouse. I think that we shouldn't be forced to trade one asset for another, and that we can do better in terms of trying to locate a firehouse. And I know that, I think, tonight, or maybe we didn't, we tabled canceling the grant money, but part of the issue is, if you get an award for $3 million to build a firehouse, and then you don't act on that award for four years, it becomes, you know, they rescind their grant award, and now we have no choice but to cancel the line item in the budget. And so, while I believe that it is necessary for us to find a place, a suitable place for a firehouse, I certainly wouldn't support putting it on Heard Park, I certainly wouldn't support putting it on Main Memorial Park. To me, we should be looking at, and perhaps one of these properties on that list fits that bill, but my recollection of the discussions is the property needed to be fairly significantly large in order to be able to house very large fire trucks, and in order to be able to actually maneuver them as well. So, my guess is none of these on the list would be for a firehouse. And the idea of using these properties to kind of swap out for a park is something that I wouldn't support, even though we technically can find the properties cobbled together and create this Frankenstein sense of open space. It wouldn't really be public parks that would be utilized by the public, and I think that that kind of flies in the face of what open space and green acres has in mind.
I mean, I'm not fixed on that, I just know that that was a discussion we were having. But it's, I think it's still worth for us to have a discussion, and maybe there's other properties that we can explore. So I'm just, again, curious to know if this is some leverage that we can use as we continue this discussion with these properties, to use it as some type of swap.
Yeah, no, and I think that's a legitimate, if you need a second to be able to put it on the agenda so that we can have actually everyone here to discuss that, that's probably a good idea. So I would certainly support your-
Yeah, thank you, if we can have this put on the agenda to see what are those options, right? If we continue to bring up the conversation to explore a fire, a new firehouse that we in dire need of here in the city, what does this look like? If we can put it for discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the reasons that we put that property-owned list there for redevelopment zones, for re-acclimating it back to the tax rolls, for selling it to adjacent properties, and to do all those different actions that we could take with those properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we call it a night.
Very good, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.